November first, two thousand and twenty-two. This will be a hybrid meeting, and so this notice I'm about to read is required. This is to formally advise that is required by General Law's Chapter thirty-eight, Sections eighteen through twenty-five, and pursuant to Chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-one. An act relative to extending certain COVID-nineteen measures adopted during a state of emergency signed into law on June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, as extended by special legislation dated July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public meeting on Tuesday, November first, two thousand and twenty-two, at five forty-five, beginning with executive session, and opening to the public no sooner than six P. M. in the hearing room, Yarmouth Town Hall, eleven forty-six through twenty-eight, South Yarmouth, Mass., oh, two-six-six-four. The public is welcome to attend either in person or via the alternate public access provided below. We will be going into executive session, and we will again be returning to public section and meet a public session immediately thereafter. I don't expect this meeting to be very long, approximately fifteen minutes or so. So do I have a motion?
I so moved.
Okay, so we have a motion that the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen will consider entering into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law's Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A, to consider the purchase of real property on Higgins Coral Road. Is that your motion, Dorcas?
Yes, it is.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We'll have a roll.
Makes his designation to, don't forget that part.
Excuse me?
The chairman makes his designation that doing it in open session may...
Yes, and I, I, I make a determination that having this meeting in public section, session would be prejudicial to the interests of the town of Yarmouth, and we're therefore going into executive session for those reasons. We'll take a roll call vote on that. Mark?
Of course, both I.
Yeah.
You're voting on going into a meeting?
Going into executive session.
Hi.
Dorcas?
Hi.
Peter?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. We are now in executive session, and we will return to public section immediately after the conclusion of our business in executive session. Our first order of business is public announcements, and we have our town clerk, Mary Maslowski, that's going to give us an update on what's happening in elections.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity, as always, Mary Maslowski, Town Clerk. I just wanted to give a quick election update. We are still in the process of doing in-person early voting, so anybody that would like to vote early in person can come to this hearing room, eight-thirty to four-thirty tomorrow through Friday. It ends at four-thirty P. M. on Friday. The deadline to receive a vote-by-mail ballot, to apply for a vote-by-mail ballot, has expired. It was five P. M. today. So if you have not submitted an application and you still want to vote early, you can certainly come to Town Hall and actually vote in person. We have processed over six thousand vote-by-mail ballots. We've had over six hundred and fifty people come and vote in person, so we expect that, those numbers, to tick up over the next few days.
When you say you processed over six thousand mail-in ballots, are you talking about ballots that have gone out or ballots that have been returned?
Ballots that have gone out. Ballots that have gone out in the mail.
Do you have any instructions for people that have mail-in ballots?
So people that do have, do have mail-in ballots to return. First of all, please sign the ballot envelope. Put the ballot inside the, the yellow or brown envelope that is inside the white mailing envelope. Please make sure that it is signed. If it's not signed, we cannot accept it. You can return your ballot either by mail or through the Dropbox, which is just to the left of the, the side door here at Town Hall. Says ballot, it says ballot Dropbox. If it is dropped in that Dropbox, it needs to be received by eight P. M. on November eighth, which is Tuesday, Election Day. It will then get processed at the polls. If you have a vote-by-mail ballot, please do not bring it to the polling location. If you're going with family to vote, it has to come back here to Town Hall. We need to process it into the system before we bring it over to the polling location to actually run the ballots through the tabulators. If however you choose to postmark it, it needs to be postmarked by November eighth. As long as it's postmarked by November eighth, it can be mailed back to us, and we will process them after November twelfth, based on the deadlines. If you give me one moment, I will find the deadlines. Return of the vote-by-mail ballots. If they are returned by mail, they can, must be postmarked by November eighth. They have to be received in our office by November twelfth. If they're mailed within the United States, if for some reason they're mailed from outside the United States, it's November eighteenth. So those deadlines are important, or else we cannot count them even if they're postmarked on time. That being said, we, we would expect most of them, if they are mailed within Yarmouth, to be received in time if they're postmarked by November eighth.
In terms of delivery to the Town Hall, is there any method you prefer? Is it, you prefer people to drop them in the outside box or to come into the clerk's office or either one?
Whatever's easiest for the voter. We do check that Dropbox multiple times a day. So if it is put in that Dropbox, we will get it the same day. If it's sent to the post office, the post office has been very good about keeping those ballots in-house and sending them right to us. But if there is the, there is the potential delay for coming back from the mail, but that is entirely up to the voter.
All right, thank you, Mary. Does anybody have anything from Mary on the board? So Mary, you're going to be hanging around to do some swearing in, I understand?
I certainly am, and I will just take the opportunity to remind everybody that if you traditionally voted the White Church, First Congregational Church on six A, you will still vote there. If you traditionally vote at Kingsway and you voted there in, in September, you will still vote at Kingsway on six A. Otherwise, everyone else votes at the Senior Center, including anybody that used to at some point vote at Town Hall. While we're doing in-person early voting at Town Hall, Election Day voting is not in Town Hall. It is all at, the rest of it is all at the Senior Center. So I will, on that note, just offer, if anybody has any questions, to please call our office. It's the main telephone number. Just push the button for this clerk's office, and you'll get us and we'll answer whatever questions you have.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any public announcements? No, seeing none. We'll go to the next item, which is public comment. Mr. Henderson?
Good evening. My name is John Henderson, and I am a resident of the Comickwood Heights. And I'm here tonight because we have an item on the agenda addressing the water issues in Comickwood Heights. And also because my most recent bill is eighty percent higher than if it had been billed to us by the town of Yarmouth using Yarmouth water rates. Our position is that, from the start, has been that Yarmouth residents should all pay the same rates for water. We need to find a solution to this disparity. There is a lot more material in the packet than I expected, so I hope to boil down the history in three minutes or less. By way of background, Comickwood Heights straddles the Yarmouth Municipal Town Line. We have approximately three hundred homes. Forty-seven parcels are within the town of Yarmouth of those three hundred. Services to those forty-seven parcels are governed by intermunicipal agreement. Our water is supplied by Barnstable Fire District Water Department. Up until two thousand and eight, water bills were rendered by the Yarmouth Water Department using Yarmouth rates. In two thousand and eight, it was determined that water bills were to be rendered by the Barnstable Fire District Water Department at their current rates. There was little difference between our rates and, and in Yarmouth and the Barnstable rates at that time, so we went along. However, that is no longer the case. Four years ago, the, the Board of Selectmen agreed that all Yarmouth residents should pay the same rates for water and authorize a rebate program. We have received four rebates checks beginning in two thousand and nineteen for twenty-eighteen usage. Board of Select, the Board of Selectmen delivered, desired to find a revenue source and decided to tack on a nickel per gallon to newly drafted Yarmouth Supply Program to the town of Barnstable. That program has now expired, as has the revenue source. Apparently, there were some funds left, but not the full amount to cover the aggregate differential. Going forward, there are no revenues tagged for our rebates. There is no correlation between identifying a revenue source and a justification of, for rebates, in our opinion. We are here tonight to seek a permanent, permanent solution to bridge this differential. The Barnstable rates are scheduled to double over in the next five years to pay for the new twenty million dollar PFAS filtration system to mitigate unacceptable levels which we are now drinking. That works out to be over ten thousand dollars per the nineteen hundred and seventy-five customers on average. That increase, they expect to increase our rates from what we're currently paying by one hundred percent over a five-year period. We prefer to receive untainted, non-PFS water, Yarmouth water billed by town of Yarmouth at Yarmouth rates. G. P. W. has prepared a good presentation, which is included in tonight's packet. Eye-popping dollar options are presented. It needs to be remembered that Yarmouth never paid for the delivery system in the first place. It was the Barnstable Water Department who installed and maintains the water mains, the cost of which has been amortized through our water bills over the past more than fifty years. Our water mains are over fifty years old, and we've had major breaks near my home in the, in the past two years. And this morning, I noticed a third one. What is, we want, we need to know what the expective life of these water mains is going forward. Perhaps the pipes are up for replacement anyway, so the numbers presented should not be viewed as incremental infrastructure cost, but mostly capital infrastructure replacement cost. Bottom line is, three issues need to be addressed tonight. A rebate program continuation needs to be authorized as a stopgap based on equity. A long-term solution should be found that eliminates the administrative billing and rebate manual burden and provides Yarmouth users with quality, clean water supply. And we need to find out if grants are available to pay for some of this. Dan Knappick previously had thought that there might be that possibility. Thank you for your consideration in finding a proper solution to this problem.
Okay, thank you, John. Appreciate it. Next.
Good evening. Excuse me. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Marcus Buckley. I live at Two Firestone Drive in Comickwood Heights. I'm at the very end of the line for the Barnstable Water System. I have a really unique problem. When the water main broke today, oh, yes, this weekend, Barnstable Fire District came in and fixed the, the pipe, and I wound up with brown water because I'm at the very end of my, of the water line, and I had to call the fire district to come out and flush out the lines. They're very responsible and very good about it, but it, it's, to me, this whole thing is like taxation without representation. I pay my taxes to the town. I live in the town. I think I should be able to get my water from the town. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
We have Vida Morris on television.
Vida is?
Yes.
Did you turn off the TV? Vida, are you on there? I hope she...
Now I am, I think. Can you hear me?
I hope you didn't hear my last comment.
That's, that, that's okay. I, I laughed at it, okay?
What you like to enlighten us about tonight?
I wanted to clarify something with regard to, that has to do with the assessor's presentation further on into the program. I have a very specific question, so I wonder, do I have to pose it right now? Or will there be time allotted for people to participate at the time of the assessor's presentation?
Why don't you ask it now?
Oh, okay. What I, what I want to know is...
We'll relay the question.
Okay, the, the prop two and a half, or, you know, the two and a half cap that we have on our town budget each year, does that in any way at all trickle down to the taxpayers, individual taxpayers? Because Mr. Ferguson, in his letter, explained, for instance, how the California's Prop thirteen works there, and it's a, it's very simple, very understandable, and it would be interesting to see how we do it. And, and because that, that Prop thirteen was initiated to, to give, give relief to the individual taxpayers at the time, and, and that's what seems to be happening. But I don't know that ours works that way because we certainly, individual people are experiencing much higher increases in our taxes here every year. So if, if they would do somehow, you know, explain that, how that works in, in Massachusetts here, I would, I would appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll see what we can get for you for information. Thanks. Anyone else? No?
Well, it looks like that's it.
Okay. We'll move on. My next item. This guy's name keeps cropping up. Did last Friday, did yesterday, and here we are again tonight. Retirement recognition for the poet laureate of Yarmouth and former police chief, Yarmouth Police Chief Frank Frederickson. That's our six-fifteen item. Good evening, Chief Frederickson.
Good evening. Ex-chief to you.
Once a chief, always a chief.
There he is in his civvies.
We have an official citation. I know that you received one yesterday. For people who weren't there yesterday, we had a very wonderful ceremony at the Yarmouth Police Station at one o'clock, and it was extremely well-attended. And it was really an idea that came up as a result of Mark Forrest's interaction with people in the Coast Guard, and it was a change, change of command ceremony. And what it was about essentially was Frank turning over the reins to our new chief, Kevin Lennon. There's various speakers there, various dignitaries, and it was a really terrific ceremony. And at that time, we recognized Frank, but we wanted to do something publicly too because others that couldn't get away during the, the workday or people who wanted to participate in this through video access could do so. So that's why we're having you back. And of course, you don't need an invitation here. You're always welcome back in Yarmouth. And when I said sincerely, I was not kidding you. Once a chief, always a chief. I'm sure that's how the people of Yarmouth feel about you. So we have, we'd like you to come forward. We have a citation for you. And no poems tonight. There's a total prohibition against that. So if you have one, get rid of it right now. And then we also have, just so people will know what's happening, our new, new chief, Kevin Lennon, gave me a, a police badge, which I thought was for me. So if I got a ticket, you know, I could flash my ten and, and walk. But he said, no, that really wasn't the intent. It's a, it says retired on it, unfortunately. Police Department, Town of Yarmouth, retired, and the chief. Very, very nice badge as a memento. So we're going to have you come forward. We're going to give you the citation. We're going to give you your new credentials and do a photo op. So I will have you, after I read the citation, I will have you come forward to receive it and have the board welcome you up in front of the structure, whatever you call it. Town of Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, official citation. Be it known that the town of Yarmouth hereby recognizes Frank G. Frederickson on his retirement as police chief effective October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, and for the dedicated service to this town. And be it further known that the town of Yarmouth extends its sincerest thanks and appreciation for his total forty-five years of tireless service in the police department. This citation is duly signed by the Chairman, Board of Selectmen, on this first day of November in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-two. And I'm signing this on behalf of each and every member of the Board of Selectmen, and it's a great honor for me, Frank, personally, to sign this citation on their behalf. And I also have the badge I have to give you reluctantly. I would... Kevin, can you do something about getting me one of these? So why don't you come forward and we'll, we'll present this. Right up, we'll take the picture or two. So here, first of all, is your citation on behalf of the board. And... It is beautiful.
Thank you.
If you like the way you just try to get it with the whole thing in it.
That's awesome.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you for all your service to the town.
Thank you.
And I'm going to tell you something, Chief. Having ceremonies for you, this is my third one. Going there Friday, yesterday. It never gets old. Never gets old.
What I do in retirement, go to ceremonies.
And then we'll see you, we'll see you at Retirement Dinner.
Thank you.
Bring the ice cream. Okay. That was good. Now, we have, in need, we are in need of our town clerk again. We have a swearing in of our new deputy chief. As you probably know, our new chief, Kevin Lennon, was the former deputy chief. He was moved up in rank. And to replace him as deputy chief is Andrew O'Malley. And we also are going to swear in Lieutenant Brian Carcetti and also Sergeant Sean Reed. So we'll first start with, in order of senior rank, our deputy chief, Andrew O'Malley.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've almost made it to day one. I've almost made it to day one. This is a good start. I'm very happy to be here tonight, so we can swear in these three, three officers. Each one of them has a, a very impressive pedigree, training experience in law enforcement. We're going to start with Deputy Chief O'Malley. Deputy Chief O'Malley has twenty-two years of law enforcement experience and began his career with the Yarmouth Police Department in two thousand. Deputy Chief, Chief O'Malley has served as a patrol officer, a field training officer, a patrol sergeant, a patrol lieutenant, a member of the Cape Cod Regional SWAT team where he rose to the level of assistant team commander, a department instructor in patrol procedures, active shooter response, use of force, tasers and firearms. He was also a very instrumental instructor with the municipal police training committee. Deputy Chief O'Malley has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He's a master's degree in public administration, and he's a two thousand and eighteen graduate of Class two-seventy-four of the FBI National Academy. Deputy Chief O'Malley is accompanied by members of his family, and Deputy Chief O'Malley will be pinned by his wife, Kira, and his two children, excuse me. There had to be a mix-up somewhere. He will be pinned by his wife, Kristen, and his two children, Kira and Brayden.
I'm glad you straightened that out.
Yeah.
Next, we have Lieutenant Brian Carcetti, and our new chief, Kevin Lennon, will give us a few words about him.
Yes, thank you. Lieutenant Carcetti has been with the Yarmouth. He's got fifteen years of experience in law enforcement. He's been with the Yarmouth Police Department since two thousand and twelve. Prior to that, he served with the Orleans Police Department for five years. Lieutenant Carcetti has served as a patrol officer, a field training officer, a motor unit officer. He's currently a member of the Cape Cod Regional SWAT team. On that team, he's been a team leader, a sniper unit member, and combat medic. Lieutenant Carcetti is a department instructor in active shooter response, and he's also an instructor with the Municipal Police, Municipal Police Training Committee. Lieutenant Carcetti has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, a master's degree in public administration, and Lieutenant Carcetti is accompanied tonight by members of his family, and he's going to be pinned by his son, Tommy.
Oh, wow.
That's great.
Pretty cool.
Good job. Good job.
Okay. Next officer that will be sworn in tonight will be Sergeant Sean Reed.
Thank you. Sergeant Sean Reed has eleven years of law enforcement experience and began his career with the Yarmouth Police Department in two thousand and nineteen. Part of joining Yarmouth, Sergeant Reed served with the Orleans Police Department for eight years. Sergeant Reed has served as a patrol officer, a field training officer, a member of the Cape Cod Regional SWAT team, which he's a current member of. He's a department instructor in active shooter response. He's also an instructor with the Municipal Police Training Committee. Sergeant Reed has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, and he's attended numerous courses on leadership, investigations, and professional development. Sergeant Reed is accompanied by members of his family tonight, and he will be pinned by his wife, Bridgette.
This is the best part.
All three are now going to come to the front, and our town clerk is going to swear them all in.
And after the officers are sworn, as is our custom, I remind them, we would like you to process through the ranks so the board can, uh, congratulate each of you.
Good evening, once again, Mary Maslowski, Town Clerk. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and swear them in this evening. I would just ask each of you to raise your right hand. You're going to, uh, all be sworn in at the same time, so I will ask you to, at the appropriate time, to state your name and state your title. Um, and then we will go from there. So I, please state your name. Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and will support the Constitution and laws thereof. In further, I please state your name. Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as, please state your new title for the Town of Yarmouth Police Department according to the charter, bylaws, rules, and regulations of the Town of Yarmouth, the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the Constitution law and laws of the United States of America. So help me God. Thank you very much. I would just ask each of you to come forward.
Mr. Chairman, while we're signing the paperwork, uh, there was, uh, another recent hiring. Doesn't get sworn in or the accolades that all of our uniformed officers have, but, um, the new behavioral clinician is with us this evening, uh, Justine Portago, uh, has recently started, and this innovative program, obviously just approved by the Board of Selectmen very recently. So I'm just honored, and if you could wave to us. Thank you very much, Justine.
Let's look everyone else.
We're so busy signing your names.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Chief. Next item is the six forty-five item, actually. A little earlier than that one, but, um, are the folks here from the Judah Baker Windmill presentation yet? I don't see anybody responding.
I think they're coming up. They're, they're here.
Yeah, there's a going to be a little little shift here. Give them a few minutes to clear out.
Hi, how are you? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good to see you again. Yeah.
Oh, we got some, yeah. Picture of the windmill, nice picture. The shadow there. Got your shadow. Picture of the windmill. Okay, good evening, ladies. You want to introduce yourselves, please?
I'm Mary Lou Remmern. I've been a docent at the Judah Baker Windmill for thirty-seven or eight years.
Thank you.
And I'm Beverly Bishan, and I don't know what my position would be, but I kind of coordinate getting it all together for the season.
The coordinator, executive coordinator.
Whatever.
Okay. Who's going to go first?
Mary Lou's going to talk.
Okay.
Okay, so the two thousand twenty-two season for the Judah Baker Windmill tours went very well. With the help of our terrific docents, we were able to keep the mill open Tuesday and Thursday afternoons, June through Labor Day. And thanks to the wonderful commitment of Andy Schreick, who was ready to have the mill open on time. We started the season in June with a group visit of sixteen students and two teachers from the Culinary Arts Department of Cape Cod Tech High School. The class toured the building, provided a wonderful picnic lunch for all, including us, the docents, and played games on the lawn. So the two thousand twenty-two season included a crew filming from the Restoration Road for the Magnolia Channel as part of their episode featuring Yarmouth and Taylor Bray Farm restoration. The crew took over four and a half hours of film inside and outside the mill and interviewed myself and Marshall Leonard and other docent. The interviewer was very impressed with the mill and its history, and we will be contacted when the show is going to actually air. The mill was open for twenty-four days this year, and we hosted over seven hundred and fifty visitors. We kept the visitors to four to five in the mill at a time, and we had three docents. One would work outside and talk about the outside of the building and the history. One would work inside on the first floor, and a second, a third one would work on the second floor, talking about the mechanics of the, the mill. Our experienced docents were trained, six new docents hopefully, this year, and to continue with us for next year. The most frequent comment by the visitors this year was the delight that the mill is open. And after being closed for the past two years and not being open very often, and the concern that at some point it may close forever. So the Judah Baker Windmill is a major attraction here in Yarmouth and should be considered an important site as it ties together the historical significance of our town. Next year, we project to be open three days a week, since we have more docents, and will probably increase the visitors to close to a thousand people.
Thank you.
Just an update, just so that you all know about, about the mill and how great it is. We have people from all over the world that come to visit, and we're, we, you know, we're very impressed with them, and they are always so impressed. We get a lot of Europeans that come, and they haven't seen a mill like ours in a while because they're, because they've had them in their countries for many times. So they're really excited about coming to see our mills. So we're very happy to be able to keep the mill open and hope that it will happen.
Visitors come from Alaska all the way down to Venezuela, from California all the way over to London and Lyon, France, and even Marrakesh. And they're always very impressed with the mill, and the fact that it has been restored so nicely that it is a possible working mill is very impressive to them. It was turned over to the town in nineteen fifty-nine, and the town has taken over the maintenance of it since then. I want to thank you all for our time.
Well, maybe we'll see if we have any questions or comments by the board before you leave. Mark?
No, I just want to thank you for the work that you do. Um, the board's very, um, appreciative of all of the the volunteer hours, particularly with the town being so rich in its history. And we're very fortunate to have so many groups involved in helping us preserve as well as, um, articulate the history and, and inform residents that come here. It's amazing how many people come here, not just to enjoy the beaches and our recreational facilities, but they really love our history in the background. And, uh, all your work really helps a lot in terms of improving the quality of life for the folks that come here, the folks that live here. So, uh, thank you for all your work. It's very much appreciated.
Very intrigued with the history of the mill, and also we add a little bit about the salt works and how the salt works were very prominent along that Bass River. And all that history of Bass River can be, we bring in as best we can to the visitors, depending on what their interests are.
And I think, I think our hope is is that we can do more as a community. Um, as you know, over the years, we've been very constrained budget-wise. It's been very difficult for us, but, um, as we look ahead, I think our hope collectively is that we can do more to interpret the history of Yarmouth. As you mentioned, Bass, that Bass River Village area along River Street and Pleasant Street is incredibly rich in terms of history. And there, there's just so many stories to be told about all the great things that happened there over the years. So thank you once again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dan.
It's more of the same. I'm, I'm very appreciative, um, the passion that people like yourselves have to do this day in and day out and to make this available to people, not only visiting the town, but people who live here. It's very much appreciated, and, you know, um, I just think it's so important that we hold on to the history of this town, and, uh, I think we're doing a good job, but obviously we couldn't do it without people like yourselves who are willing to, to guide people along and others that, um, do the, uh, the upkeep and the maintenance. And we're just extremely appreciative and love the fact that, um, you were able to help us in this way and, and really help us show others, uh, what a wonderful town we live in. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Dorcas?
Thank you, ladies. Unbelievable. I think of all those hot summer days, especially the poor person up on the second floor must have been really uncomfortable. Thanks to you, we have this living history in town, and it's fantastic to be able to bring this forward to the younger generation and to show them what really our town has been built on, um, is incredible. But it, it comes back to you ladies, all of the people at work at that windmill. You've done a tremendous, tremendous job, and it would not be the success it is today without you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorcas. Peter?
I was a summer brat in Bass River, uh, as a kid, and I, I can remember the first restoration that was done in seventy-four. And then the fire shortly thereafter, and the arson fire shortly thereafter, and thank goodness that the town got it together to restore the building and put it together in nineteen ninety-nine, as you indicated on, on the flyer. It's a, it, it's a wonderful place. I've been at it, I don't know, a thousand times, maybe, and it's, it's a, it's a, it's a beautiful thing, and, and, uh, Mark Forrest is going to go to Dearborn and get our other windmill back from Dearborn. Again, thank you for all the work you do. It's, it's, it's a wonderful asset for the town.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions, and then I have a few comments. Is it difficult for you to recruit docents? I, I note that you have three per shift, so obviously you, you, you know, if you're going to expand the hours, you got to have the personnel. Is it difficult? How do you go about enlisting, um, people to help you?
We, we, um, distribute flyers, flyers almost everywhere. Um, we, the Chamber of Commerce keeps flyers up for us. It's a lot of word of mouth. We have people coming that, um, that have been told by other docents that are working, do you want to come and visit? And then they come in and they say, okay, especially Mary Lou. She stands there and almost signs them in as they come in to say, you now you'd love to work here. So anyway, we, it's a lot of, um, just a lot of, uh, reaching out to various places. We sent the libraries put up a flyer for us, so, you know, we just keep putting up flyers and trying to connect. We were able to, uh, connect with the seniors, uh, the senior center this year, which was a great thing because we did get someone that worked at the senior center, and that was a, she was a great, um, addition to the team. The, the team, um, that have worked there is just like four people that have worked there for the last few years, and they're just wonderful. And when, and when do people come in, they just take them under their wing and show them everything, and we give them a you know, a booklet, and they can follow a booklet along and get all the history from the booklet. And they just learn as they go, and, and they fall in love with it, just like all of us do, because it's such a beautiful place, and it's just such a great history that it just kind of sells itself. So if we can get someone in the door, usually we can keep them in the door because they love it, so. And we're very happy that we did get an opportunity to get more people this year.
The other thing I was wondering about, how long does it take to train somebody to be a docent? I imagine you would have to have quite a bit of information to be able to, you know, talk about with the visitors.
I've accumulated a lot from people from way back when I started, Anne Sealy, Irene Woodbury, Lorraine Loughlin. I know, I thought the same thing. Yeah, who's a, um, local person. And that's how we do, and, um, Sarah Horn provided with us a lot of printed material about the mill, about the history of the area and what have you, even came up with a list this long of sayings that come from the windmill. So that
Can we have a couple? Can we have a couple?
We may have, I don't have more than this one with me, but we'll get you one, but here's a few for you to remember. As a rule of thumb, you need to keep your nose to the grindstone as a docent and show our metal not to be three sheets to the wind. The people are milling around and need to get their daily grind.
Pretty good. My comment, as I share the comments of my fellow board members, um, Mark Forrest and I in particular have had a lot of con, of conversation about, you know, what, what resources Yarmouth has, what wealth of, um, amenities Yarmouth has. In addition to beaches and things like that, we've talked about the culture and the, um, traditions and the history of Yarmouth, which is very, very rich. And it would be a shame to just, you know, let it go unattended, so to speak. And so people like you And so people like you do a great job in keeping it alive and keeping that amenity out there, which makes Yarmouth a more desirable place to visit and learn things about. So we really appreciate and value the work that you do.
And it's such a great value because people come back year after year that have been there. Just, just like you said, you saw it so many, many times.
You were closed down with COVID for a couple of years, weren't you? A couple of seasons?
Yeah, we, yeah, we got closed down with COVID.
You were kind of really getting back into it again this last summer.
Yeah, we slowed down going in just because we weren't sure what was going to happen this past summer. But as it was, we were very lucky. And that's why we had more docents on and we kind of spaced things out and didn't have as many people in the building at a time, just to keep it safe. And we also had masks and everything available for people that came in if they wanted them and they felt comfortable would want to wear them in the building. So we, we kind of had a little slower time because we were being much more cautious.
Yeah, sure.
So, thank you for having us.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you so much.
Join us as a docent?
Thank you.
All right. Was a great picture. Now we're going to go to the Comacquid Heights Water Rebates, Water Rebates Discussion, which is scheduled for seven. So we're just about there if everybody's ready on that.
Good evening. Jeff Colby, the Public Works Director. I'm also joined by Lori Rosala, the Water Superintendent by Zoom. So hopefully we can get her promoted to a panelist just in case there are any questions that would be good for her to answer. With that said, as the chairman indicated, we're here to talk about the Comacquid Heights Water Rebates. Just by way of overview, so that everyone's clear about the area that we're talking about. This is Comacquid Heights. That's where there are Yarmouth residents in Comacquid Heights in yellow. Of course, the neighborhood extends significantly to the west there as well, but those are Barnstable residents. There is a, the railroad tracks here, as well as Willow Street is shown in blue here, just to kind of orient people to the neighborhood that we're talking about. There are forty seven parcels within the town of Yarmouth that are subject to these rebates that we're discussing. Forty three are currently developed and connected to the Barnstable Fire District Water System and serviced by them. And as I mentioned, the train tracks make it difficult to provide a physical connection. With that said, there's a long history of an agreement between the town of Yarmouth and the Barnstable Fire Districts. The most recent version was signed in two thousand eight. It's a twenty five year agreement. And that agreement indicates that if a customer receives drinking water that's pumped and treated and distributed through the Barnstable Fire District owned and maintained water pipes, they'll pay the Barnstable Fire District rates. And if a customer receives drinking water pumped, treated and distributed through the Yarmouth owned and maintained water pipes, they pay the Yarmouth water rates. That's what the agreement indicates. And so we have been following that until four years ago, where there was a source of funds through an agreement with the town of Barnstable, where we were selling them water. As part of that agreement, they not only paid a per gallon price for the water that was supplied to the town of Barnstable, but also a fixed fee each year that was used for the funding of the rebates. And you'll see a slide in a moment that shows a breakdown of that. And that's right here, the cost summary, as I mentioned before, indicates that the funds were used from the town of Barnstable. That program stopped in two thousand twenty where they completed their treatment facility. And they therefore did not need to receive the Yarmouth water at that time. That agreement has expired and Hyannis doesn't have any interest in continuing that agreement. They don't, at this time, need water from Yarmouth. So as a result, all the funds have been expended. This is just a breakdown over the four fiscal years of what the rebates looked like for reference purposes. In two thousand nineteen, it was fifteen thousand dollars. In two thousand twenty, it was just over eleven thousand. Two thousand twenty one, it was almost sixteen thousand. And then just last year, it was just over ten thousand dollars. To give you an idea of what those rebates look like for those Yarmouth residents.
So Jeff, just so we are clear, I'm clear. So that money that was paid over was out of the money that Barnstable was paying us for the water we were supplying to them?
Correct. As I mentioned, there was a fixed per gallon fee that we got that included not only the cost of providing the water, electricity to pump and any treatment that occurred, but also some capital costs associated with that as well. That was a per gallon price. But even if they didn't take any water for the duration of that agreement, there was still a fixed yearly fee they paid. And those funds were the ones that were shown here. That's what was paid each year. They did it for a period of three years. Because there was funds left over in that pool of funds, we were able to continue the rebates for a fourth year. But to be clear, Barnstable only paid us for, for three annual fees. The agreement was for a three year agreement and those were the fees they paid. So I thought another piece of information that would be helpful for the board is what the water rates currently look like. On this chart, you see here the Barnstable Fire District rates. If you are a low user of water, less than twenty five thousand gallons, the price is four dollars and twenty cents per thousand gallons. The Yarmouth rate is currently, if you're a lower water user, the rate is two dollars and seven cents per thousand gallons. And of course, it goes up from there. Another important concept for the board to be aware of is what the typical water use looks like, just providing all the information. The average residential water customer for two thousand twenty one, this is the last year of full data that we have, our full years data. The Yarmouth residents in Comacquid Heights averaged a hundred and ten thousand gallons. The average Yarmouth water customer, so this is throughout the entire town of Yarmouth, used seventy thousand gallons. And generally, the difference between those would be irrigation for the most part. Although there's probably some differences in usage patterns as well, but that's why there's a significantly larger number there. It's also important to note that in two thousand twenty one, where this data came from, there were no water restrictions in either one of the systems. The water restrictions for the town of Yarmouth, the board is very familiar with what we did this, this past year, based upon the drought. But it's also important to note that the Barnstable Fire District only had voluntary odd even water restrictions. There was nothing mandatory with the Barnstable Fire District. And the other piece of information I think would be very helpful for the board to have is that this is a challenge that we've looked at multiple ways to address. Back in two thousand nineteen, we had a water master plan developed for the town of Yarmouth. There were a number of items within that water master plan. They projected out for us and looked at different challenges we were having at that time. One of the things we asked the consultant to look at was how could we connect this particular neighborhood to the Yarmouth water system? And what would that look like to do so? And what they said is there are a couple of different options. The first option would be to make two physical connections from Willow Street. There is a water main in Willow Street. One would be on the northern side and the other connection would be on the southern side here. That's what's shown as option number one in this slide. Again, there's two railroad crossings in which to accomplish that. It's important to note that there would be what we call dead ends here. It's not a circular system in this option. And it does not include the residents that are over here in the middle. They would still not be serviced under this first option. The cost of this first option back in two thousand nineteen was just over two point eight million dollars. And of course, costs have gone up since then. We know what's happened over the last couple of years. And we've seen significant costs increase over that period of time. But those are two thousand nineteen dollars. And so one of the things I like to do, looking at it from an engineering perspective, is what is the payback in which to accomplish this, you know, costly project? And if our rebates are somewhere in the neighborhood are fifteen thousand dollars, it would take approximately a two hundred year payback period to address this additional cost here. And so for that reason, this particular option is pretty costly. There's a, the rebate program that we just looked at, and I can return to that slide in a moment, shows that it's a relatively minor cost for us to do that program going forward compared to the capital cost. But we also asked the consultant to look at, well, what if you serviced all of the customers, including the ones that are in the middle of that Comacquid Heights neighborhood? And that would be option number two. We would need to add a water main through the town of Barnstable significantly over into the town of Barnstable. That's represented by this dotted line here. And it would loop in and connect all of these particular residents. That would certainly be the preferred option because it would provide a circular loop for water quality purposes. There would be limited number of what we call dead ends in that particular option. And it would service all of the customers. That particular option would add just under four million dollars to the cost. So you can add those two together. That would be just under seven million dollars for that particular scenario to play out. Again, a very costly option. It is significantly more cost effective to process, continue the process of rebates versus a capital improvement project of this magnitude. But certainly, if the board wanted us to pursue that, we could add that into the program. As you're all well aware, we have a number of significant capital projects that face us in the future. Some PFOS treatment. We've got a number of things that are on this fall's town meeting schedule, as well as in the spring and the near term. We have some significant water main replacements that are happening. So there is a pretty aggressive program that we have within the town of Yarmouth to improve the physical infrastructure we already have. And so this is certainly something we want to keep in mind, based upon the cost, if we were to expand our infrastructure in this particular area. So I think that is, I've covered a lot of information. I've covered that very quickly. But I think that's the basis of the information that we have about this particular challenge. And really, the question for the Board of Selectmen serving as water commissioners tonight is, would you like to continue with the rebates? There is no particular funding source for that. If that is the direction, we'd have to do that out of the operating budget. This is a very timely discussion item because we are getting ready to prepare the operating budget. We would need to know if we need to increase our operating budget in order to cover these rebates if we continue that. Again, we don't have any expectation that we'll have a funding source from Barnstable. They don't need additional water at this time. And the other item is, as this became, as we explored all the options, we did reach out to Barnstable Fire District about this agreement and ask if they would be interested in revisiting it. And they have no interest in doing so. They're very happy with this arrangement. And again, they, they service these customers through the Barnstable Fire System. And that also a component of that agreement, not to complicate too much, but just to the south of Route Six is the campground area. And there are some residents in there that are Barnstable residents and the Yarmouth water system supports them. So there is a give and take, if you will, within that agreement and why it was developed and approved by the board in two thousand eight. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about this. And we also do have our Water Superintendent on the Zoom call if there's any questions that she needs to answer.
All right, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I appreciate the presentation. And I'm interested in knowing first, I've got several questions. First is, is there a recommendation from the administration, from either the Town Administrator's Office or the department in terms of what the board should do?
My recommendation would be to continue with the two thousand eight intermunicipal agreement that we have. It does not account for rebates, but it is a document that was agreed upon by both parties. And I would recommend that we continue with that, that particular process.
Do written hour?
I concur with that assessment. I think the residents in that area are quite fortunate that the Barnstable Fire District, you know, has stepped up. And on, on those residents' behalf, the town has negotiated an intermunicipal agreement that provides that service. And so, you know, I think that that agreement should continue in force. And it seems like the costs are excessive to connect them to the water system. And the betterments that the folks will have to pay will be far in excess of anything I think that they would be comfortable with. And I, and I think that, you know, they really have a good situation there. And, you know, the only issue that I raise as administrator is I can easily see why the local residents in that neighborhood would seek to have, you know, some type of a subsidy to cover part of their water bill. But the part that I cannot understand is that why the customers, the other customers in Yarmouth would be forced to pay higher rates to buy the water for that neighborhood. I think they have a very fortunate situation that we, we have the water. But, but keep in mind, if, without the revenue from the town of Barnstable, if, if folks are to receive rebates, that money would have to be charged to the other water users to pay that. And it seems that there's an equity problem with that.
So let me make sure I understand. The recommendation would be to continue forward with the intermunicipal agreement, to not invest in sort of making the connection because of the cost, making the, making the investment in the infrastructure to make a connection. What's at a loss is just in terms of how we fund it. Is that a fair?
No, I, I think that, you know, my recommendation would be to continue at the rates that are included in the intermunicipal agreement without a further subsidy from the ratepayers in Yarmouth. That the funds, it was a temporary situation that the funds from, that were collected from Barnstable, from selling water to Barnstable, you know, were used to help these local residents get over the hump. But now that those revenues don't exist anymore, in order to continue rebates, you'll have to charge all of the other residents for the, in Yarmouth to pay the residents of this neighborhood. And so that, that part, I don't think should
What would that charge be?
Well, it's only, I mean, it's a total of eleven thousand dollars. So it's not a ton of money. But I think that there's an equity principle in there is, is that why should those, those folks raise additional money on their water bill to pay the water bill of the people that are getting their water from Barnstable?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I think when this, when this issue came first before the board, I think what there, I think there was a recognition by the board at the time that there was an inequity here. That the residents in this portion of the town should be treated much like the Yarmouth residents. And that funding, fortunately, we had a source of funding. But by making the arrangement that was made, that basically took care, addressed the inequity. Now, I don't want to relitigate whether or not there's an inequity. I think we've, we established that and I'm comfortable with that. You know, from our, from our previous board discussions on this. I can see how some folks might have trouble understanding why we might need to do this, but we covered a lot of ground in the past on this. I'm comfortable continuing the same arrangement. The question to me is, is with the source of the funding, it was nice having a payment from the town of Barnstable to from the town of Yarmouth as the source. And I don't have a particular issue, given the amount of money that we're talking about here. I don't, I don't, I don't have any heartburn over, you know, building this into our costs. But that's obviously something that needs to be discussed and needs to be vetted. And we may need to have another meeting and another discussion about what that might all entail, because we don't know those costs. We don't have that information, or maybe we do.
Yeah, I would suggest that we do have a pretty good basis for that information, and that's the previous rebates. That's what this screen shows. At the highest level, that was just under sixteen thousand dollars. So if we build in that amount going into this next budget season, into the Yarmouth operating, water operating budget, that's the magnitude that we would be looking to capture. As you can see, in two thousand twenty two, it was actually much lower. And as our rates went up, there was some, you know, mitigation of that difference between the two rates.
Right.
But we'd have to continue to monitor and revisit that because there could be changes over time. Currently, there are potentially forty seven properties of which Currently, there are potentially 47 properties of which only 43 are currently developed. So as they develop other properties, that might change that dynamic as well. So it is something we need to monitor on a yearly basis. But I would suggest that, at least initially, a $15,000 or $16,000 number would be the conservative number for the next year budget.
Okay, so what you're recommending is that we extend the agreement, correct?
Well, there's, there's currently an agreement in place from 2008. And I wouldn't suggest we change that. And there was no interest from Barnstable Fire District to do so anyway.
All right, so we should, the recommendation, I guess what I'm trying to understand is we, we have a very interesting briefing and a lot of background, a lot of material. I'm just, I want to get at the heart of what the recommendation is before the board. And what I'm hearing is the recommendation is to continue the agreement and build into the budget the funding necessary to pay for the rebates. Is that a fair?
No.
I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but tell me what, again, what's the recommendation for the board?
Recommendation would be to continue with the 2008 agreement, which does not have any allowance for rebates whatsoever. So there would be no need to build that into the budget. We can continue to monitor that situation and see if this trend changes. Two years ago, it was $16,000. It went down to 10, just over $10,000. And maybe it's going to get even closer this next year. We don't know what the numbers are.
Recommendation, again, I feel like I'm beating a dead horse here. Is the recommendation to end the rebates?
Yes, we don't have a funding source for that other than the town of Yarmouth Water Budget. And I don't think that's an appropriate spot. I think the Town Administrator discussed the reasons for that. The inequities between other Yarmouth ratepayers having to pay for.
Just looking, yeah, thank you. I'm just looking for clarity on this, Mr. Chairman. It's very unclear what it is the board is being asked to do.
Getting to the core of issues here.
So the recommendation would be not to continue the rebates, basically to extend the agreement and to end the rebates because there isn't an appropriate funding source.
That's correct. We'll continue to look for funding sources. If there's opportunities out there, we'll bring that back before the board. But as of today, there's no funding source that we've found that we could identify for this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Maybe it's my confusion. The rebates, are they just trying to equalize the difference between the rates in the two towns? Or are we paying the residents in Comocuit entire water bill?
Just the difference.
And are we covering the distance, the difference entirely with this amount of money?
It was, the difference was addressed for these four fiscal years.
So that, that they, in reality, paid the same rates as our water customers here in town?
For those four fiscal years, yes.
Okay. I don't, I don't necessarily have an issue with that. You know, we talk about questions of equity. Everybody else in town is paying one rate. And it seems unfair that this small contingent across railroad track is paying a higher rate. And this is really a very small amount of money that we're talking about, especially in comparison to construction costs. I mean, Jeff, what would, can you ballpark an estimate per household of how much money we're actually talking about here?
Well, you could do this, the quick math with any one of these numbers and divide it by the 43 users. Pull out my calculator.
He's the banker.
But if you took even the biggest number divided by 43, that would give you an idea of the average.
Very small amount of money, right? When you look at your water budget overall.
To spread that around the town to equalize, is that what your question was?
No, I'm just talking about those particular people. I mean, you know, it's a very, in my mind, it's a very small amount of money to ensure equity for 47 households that are on the other side. The other question I have is, obviously with PFAS coming in, it looks like the rates over there are going to increase substantially. We may have the same issue over here. But, so we could be doubling that within five years.
Well, I think it's hard to say because we're just starting to understand what some of our costs related to PFAS treatment are. Barnstable Fire District is a little more advanced than that. They've had a year or two to look at that and have already developed a financial recovery plan to cover those costs. Whereas we're still working through those. I think our rates are going to also be impacted because of some of those significant costs. It's just we don't know to what magnitude.
Okay, I'm certainly supportive of continuing the rebate program. I think that's fair. And it's affordable comparison to doing any kind of construction, especially with numbers that are three years old. So overall, I'm supportive of continuing the 2008 agreement and just trying to find the small amount of money that will equalize the rates so that everybody's paying this fair share. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dan. Dorcas?
Are there any other houses in Yarmouth impacted by this? You know, other areas of town that, for instance, are on Dennis Water that are Yarmouth residents?
Not that I'm aware of. We would need to have an agreement with Dennis Water District to do that. And we don't have a similar agreement on that side of town.
Okay, so this is the only place where this has happened. Comocuit Heights has been around for a long time. Has this just come up in 2020 or, I mean, in 2008? Or is this that goes back to the original development of the unit, of the property? I mean, in other words, were the people that moved into these areas made aware that they would not be on Yarmouth Water?
I don't know what the history is. I do know that Yarmouth has not provided water to this area. That infrastructure that's shown on the one slide right here that services this neighborhood is always been the Barnstable Fire District's customers.
But did I?
The beginning of that, those neighborhood. And there are some lots that have, are not developed down here in sister circle and in other areas. But since the beginning of that neighborhood, it's always been a customer of Barnstable Fire District.
And so they've always received their water bills from Barnstable and not from Yarmouth?
No, not necessarily. Prior to 2008, there was an arrangement where Yarmouth would send them a water bill based upon the readings from the Barnstable Fire Districts. There's always needed to be some close communications between Yarmouth and Barnstable Fire District on usage, which we still do because we have to calculate the rebates over the last four years. So there's close coordination, but prior to 2008, there was a different arrangement for billing.
And so for these people that have lived in Comocuit, maybe some who have lived there from when it was originally developed, up until 2008, it was, it was not an issue because they were getting Yarmouth water bills.
I believe that's the case, right.
And then all of a sudden in 2008, it became known that it wasn't technically Yarmouth Water, that it was Barnstable Water that they were using.
Well, we always knew it was Barnstable Water they were using, but a simpler process was developed in 2008 through that agreement that was signed between the Yarmouth Board and the Fire District that simplified the process where they build their customers, we build our customers. That was, that's a much more simple process.
Right, but what I'm saying is, if I were living in a house on Congressional Drive and I had been there from the beginning of the development, I don't even know when the development began, but I know it's been there for quite some time, I would have been getting a bill each year from the Yarmouth Water Department for my water. Correct?
Up until 2008.
Right, and then in 2008, all of a sudden I got a bill from Barnstable?
Correct, Barnstable Fire District, yes.
Okay, so up in the eyes of the homeowners in that area, they've always considered themselves as getting Yarmouth Water up until 2008.
I can't speak to the.
Well, I would assume if I were living there, I'd be thinking that I got Yarmouth Water. And then in 2008, it was just opportune that we happened to have an agreement where there was a payment source to offset this. But deep, but all along, those owners in Comocuit Heights still were thinking, you know, I'm a Yarmouth resident, I've got a Yarmouth water bill. And here in 2008, I hear, okay, we've resolved the issue. We're just going to rebate you the difference between your, excuse me, Barnstable bill and your Yarmouth bill. Am I correct? Because I'm new to this.
Yeah, just to clarify, between 2008 and 2019, there weren't any rebates. The rebates didn't start until 2019.
Okay, and were there, were, were there, was there a difference in the amount that they were paying during that period of time?
Yes.
Okay, and was it the homeowners then that must have come forward to the board at that time to explain that there's this anomaly between? Okay. Well, in my opinion, I would think that we deserve to continue to offer them that rebate because this is what they, they saw as the case from the time. Basically, they bought their home, Yarmouth Water. And if you were to spread that out over all of the homeowners, water users in town, I think the, the amount would be minimal per household. It could be considered as just an incidental cost for water. That's my point, Mr. Chairman.
Peter?
Given the current dollar amount, the average rebate per customer would be roughly $375 a year. When this was initially set up, were the water rates between Barnstable and Yarmouth approximately the same?
I think Barnstable's always been a little bit higher, but they were much closer.
Right, so the delta was not, not a great deal. Assuming that, that the Barnstable rates rocket up to say 150% of what they are right now, it would take, take the town approximately 155 years to amortize off the cost of the construction, which, which is excessive. You mentioned the campground. They get Yarmouth Water. Do they pay Barnstable rates?
No, they pay Yarmouth rates.
That's a potential funding source then. Get them to pay the Barnstable rates to offset the cost of, in Comocuit Heights.
The only complication with that, it would be having to revisit the agreement, which Barnstable, as I mentioned before, has no interest in revisiting that agreement. But it spelled out in the agreement exactly what we would bill and how we would bill it. So that is something we can explore. But again, we'd have to get our partner in that agreement to reopen that issue.
And, and the argument, the argument that you live in Yarmouth and you're expected to get Yarmouth Water, it probably indicated somewhere in the purchase and sale agreement where the water was coming from. I lived, I lived in this, I lived in the city of Oakland for a number of years. But I got my water, my telephone, all my utilities from the town of Berkeley. And I paid, and I paid the, paid the bills to Berkeley. If I had any issues, I had to call the town of Oakland. So it's kind of the same, same situation. And, and the rates in Berkeley were higher than the rates in Oakland. And I ate them because I didn't have a choice. And I'm going to go, I, Mr. Forrest wanted to know the recommendation. And it seems to be the recommendation is there's no funding source for this unless we, we tap the rest, rest of the town, town folks to pay, to pay the, pay the difference. I'm not sure it's fair to the rest, rest of the town residents, frankly. And I know, and, and, and I know Mr. Henderson spoke, you know, very eloquently early, early on this evening. And it's also in some ways not fair to them either. So I'm trying to, trying to decide the recommendation that you guys have for us and what's the fairest for every, everybody involved. How about that for a non-answer and comment? I would, I would, I would fully expect that our rates are going to go up once, once, you know, the PFAS is all set up and ready to go. Repairs of existing wells and, and, you know, a couple of other things, other things potentially coming down the pike. So I, I'm thinking that, though I don't know, that, that the delta between us and Barnstable is going to get much closer in a relatively short period of time. But I, I can't predict that. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you. We made a statement, Peter, I guess as a jumping off point of, to, to raise rates on the other water users in town wouldn't be fair to the residents of Yarmouth. And then you caught yourself, I think, and said, yeah, but these people are residents too. And they are. And I think the reason why they're paying higher rates is because the town doesn't want to spend the capital to remediate the situation. That's what's really driving us to this other option. If it were cheaper to directly supply the people in Comocuit, we probably would do it. Because that would forever take care of a problem. And we know that, you know, to recapture that capital is going to be just cost prohibitive over time. It's just, there's too much outlay versus the amount of money you're going to get back. So that's why we're looking at a rebate situation is because we don't want to make the capital outlay. Normally, we would. We would resolve it by taking these people off Barnstable and putting them on Yarmouth water supply lines. And as Mark said, we, we had extensive discussion about this. And I, I know there's different board members, but Mark was on the board at the time and I was on. I don't remember who else was, but we really came to the conclusion that these people needed some relief. And at that time, you know, we were supplying water to Barnstable and kind of things melted together. The only thing that's really changing isn't really the underlying equity of the situation. It's that Barnstable is no longer getting water from us. And, you know, to me, when we have citizens, you know, 47 households coming to us for relief, I'm not one that want to walk away feeling like I turned my back on them. I don't think it's a great deal of money. You know, and Mark raised the issue of equity. And what is equity? Equity is basic fairness. And the question is, should we have a section of our town paying much higher rates than the rest of the town? And I think the answer to that question from a standpoint of fairness is no. Remedy the problem. Okay, we can't because it's cost prohibitive. It's too much money to remedy the problem. Why are we looking to a remedy? We're looking to a remedy because we know there's a problem. Why would we even consider those alternatives of running pipes if we didn't realize there was some inequity? We wouldn't. We'd just say tough, we're not spending the money on consultants. We're not going to run any pipes because we think it's a fair thing for these people to pay Barnstable rates. What drives us to consider a capital solution, meaning running, running other water mains from, from Yarmouth under the tracks or whatever, is because we realize these people are being treated differently than the rest of the people in town. And we don't think that's fair. So I'm convinced that there's an equity problem here. And like Dan also and Dorcas, I think we have to provide some relief. It seems like the cheapest way to do that is to continue with the rebate program. And so that's, that's where I'm coming from.
If I can just add, Mr. Chairman, I think when we go back to the year in which we made the decision to deal with this, I was somewhat skeptical. But the board rendered a verdict. It believed that there was an inequity, that it needed to be rectified. And that was the approach that worked out. Given the sentiment of the board, I went along with it. I, I don't think it's, it's wise to revisit that. If we told the residents in this community that there was an inequity that we wanted to fix, how do we now reverse ourselves and say, well, there was a problem back then. There was an inequity, but we don't believe that anymore. I think to some degree that would be an additional disservice. So we here at this point, I think we should continue it. And, you know, I, I think, I'm not sure I'm prepared right now to outline a recommendation in terms of how we should do it. I think we should give the administration some time to look at options and present them to us. But I don't think we should leave the people of this. But I don't think we should leave the people of this part of the community hanging. That they should know that the intent of the board is to find a way to continue this and fix it, and that will address it in the upcoming budget.
I, I agree with that wholeheartedly. I think what we should do is get some proposed solutions. Given that we want to achieve equity for these people and see what the best way is to fund that. But not get into a, a discussion as, you know, to rehash the underlying inequities that exist here, but just talk about how we're going to fund this, the solution to it. I would like to see some proposals. I can, I realize from an administrative standpoint where you guys are coming from, and I do. And I, I know what the difficulties are, and I know you give directives to hold the line on budgets and things like that. But this is not a great deal of money. You're creative, intelligent people. And personally, I think we owe it to the people in Comocuit to give them some relief. So I would favor Mark's suggestion. I don't know that we need a motion on that. I think, can we get a consensus of the board that we'd like to proceed in that fashion?
I think you're, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know why we can't just do that tonight, but if you want to get suggestions for funding, that's fine.
Yeah. Dorcas is.
I'm in agreement with that.
I'm going to agree with it with, with one caveat, that it can't be an open book check. It's got to be, got to be a limit on it.
Okay, so.
You know, it's, and, you know, they're, they're expecting the rates to double. So if we were to say that, say the limit of the rebate would be, would be, you know, say 40,000, which would cover at least a couple of years worth of increases, that that should cover it.
Well, why don't we look at the numbers and the math? The math will speak to us. I mean, I, I guess you can look at this a number of ways. Take the worst case scenario, don't, don't take the, you could take the average of those four years. Or what I would probably do is I would probably fund it on the highest year of the four years. And see, no, and see what that comes to, what, what, what the worst case scenario is, and then go from there.
Rates could more than double. The Barnstable Water Department told us they're doubling the rates over a five-year period.
Yeah.
Just for the PFAS.
Mr. Henderson, can you go to the, go to the microphone, please?
I want to hear this because I think it's important. Go ahead.
Yes, the, the Barnstable Fire District Water Department has represented to us that the PFAS installation, which is going to be $20 million and approximately $10,000 for the average customer, it's going to be amortized over a 30-year period, but they're going to raise the rates definitively by 20% a year over the next five years. My rates are already 80% higher on my most recent bill than the town of Yarmouth, 80%. They're going to double just based on the PFAS installation, our rates. And then there are operating rates that will also increase over that time.
So get, get to your point. What, how do you think, how do you think the calculation or the estimate should be made?
The point is that 15,000, which is the highest number there, is probably going to be less than 50% of where we're going to be five years from now.
But why would we have to have it out that far? Why would we have to project out that far? Why couldn't we look at this year to year?
Well, we could look at it from year to year. We don't know, but, Mr. Chair.
Concerned immediately, I, I don't think we're in a position right now to, to look out five. Do you, Mark?
No, I don't. I think this need, see, because I, I, I mean, I don't want to speak for the entire board, but it might.
I like to see hard numbers too.
Yeah, exactly. I'd also, I anticipate that our rates are going to change as well. I mean, look at the investments that we have to make in PFAS treatment. So to the extent that there's a disparity.
There might be an offset on that.
Exactly. There may not be over time a significant. Yarmouth's water, we have underfunded our capital in Yarmouth for years. We have a lot of catching up to do, all right? That's why there's a disparity. As a selectman and as a water commissioner, I think it's important to note that we need to continually sustain these investments, and it won't be cheap. I get asked, the question I get asked more often than not is, why are our water rates too low, so low? All right, I get asked that. That's, that's not, not why they're too high, why they're too low. And, and I've made it very clear that if you look at what's happening with water departments around the Cape, they're all having to make investments in their infrastructure and particularly on treatment. Treatment is becoming the new big-ticket item that all departments are having to look at building into their system. So I think it's a mistake for us to go too far out here because our financial situation with our water department is going to continue to change. I think that would be a huge mistake. I don't want to, I think we need to be careful about what we get ourselves locked into. That's why I'm, like the chairman believes, I'm, I'm with him. I think we need to look at this year to year, keep an eye on it. You may find that the, the disparity over time shrinks considerably.
Chairman, if I might, again, my name is Marcus Buckley, I live at Two Firestone Drive. You know, we're, we're having this discussion because 50 or so years ago, the then-board of developers decided to kick the can down the street by not making the infrastructure connection that it should have made for its town residents. And to hear that you're fearful that it's an inequity to the other town residents, well, I don't have any kids in the school, so should I not have to pay my school, my, my portion of my real estate taxes that goes to schools? No, I'm a part of the community. And because I'm a part of the community, I should be treated equally. And it's just that simple to me. It's not kick the can down the street, don't set a cap. You know, can we predict that our real estate taxes or our income taxes will never go up again? Of course not. So to say that we should, should cap it, to say that it wouldn't be fair, the fairness problem is to us. You know, I had no idea when I bought my house that I was paying a different water rate. It was only because my friend John here brought it to my attention. And he and I and others worked with Mr. Colby and with Dan Kanapic to find a solution, and they did. And all we're asking for, again, is equity. Sooner or later, the town is going to have to install more water treatment system. My bill's going to go up. And you know what? I'm going to pay it. I'll pay it gladly. Because I live in the town of Yarmouth. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the water superintendent has her hand raised on Zoom. Is it possible to hear from her?
Lawyer, you here?
I am.
Okay, what would you like to say?
Yeah, just one thing I just wanted to add if, would be just if we do go ahead and continue the rebates, there should be some consideration for our water conservation plan and it applying to Comocuit residents. Just to make, if we're talking equity, that would be certainly something that should then apply to them, I would think. But certainly up to you guys. And in that case, we may need to kind of edit the bylaw that we are about to bring to a town meeting.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, no, I, I, Mr. Chairman, I think it's, I'm glad she's broken, addressed this. I, I would agree wholeheartedly with her recommendation that we make sure that this part of the system is subject to water conservation.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think if you're going to have a uniformity in the system, it's got to be across the board. Naturally, I would agree. All right, so I, I don't want to continue any further because I think we're at an impasse. So why don't you guys come up with a potential funding resolution on this and we'll continue it and come back to it? All right?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Comocuit Heights Water is down. Now we're going to talk money. Breakdown of the FY 2003 tax bill and assessments, the assessing division 730 item. Good evening. See some assessing people here.
Good evening. My name is Andy Machado, and I'm the assessor of the town of Yarmouth. I have with me here this evening Assistant Assessor Tara Monroe. The chairman of the Board of Assessors, Dr. John Sargent, had intended to be here as well, but he, at last minute, could not make it. And I also have.
He's right back there.
Is he there? Where is he? There's Dr. Jay.
Dr. Jay is in the room. He's in the house. And I also have Finance Director Ed Senio. And these folks are here to fill in the blanks and remind me if I forgot anything. I was asked to speak to you this evening regarding fiscal year 2023 property valuations and the resulting tax implications. There is a comprehensive document that details how Yarmouth's property values are determined in your packet. It's also available on the assessors' website, and that document can be read at your leisure. I would recommend that you try not to read it in bed because it, it may just do the trick. What we will discuss the evening is more specific to fiscal year 2023 valuations and the resulting tax, tax implications, more specifically to the residential properties. Massachusetts state law mandates that all towns in the Commonwealth revalue property every five years. Recertification or revaluation is overseen by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. The revale is a complex process which includes a full analysis of building costs, comprehensive analysis of all categories of land, income and expense review, personal property depreciation analysis, as well as a sales analysis by class, neighborhood, size, and several other criteria. Between revales, there are four interim years. According to state law, during interim years, properties have their assessed values updated to reflect their full and fair cash value, also known as fair market value, as of January 1. Fair market value is arrived at by analyzing sales that have occurred prior to the January 1 value date. The most recent interim year update to values for FY 2023 used actual sales that occurred in calendar year 2021 as dictated by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. Based on that analysis, single-family valuations as a whole in Yarmouth increased by approximately 20%. This percentage is supported by numerous real estate professional organizations, such as the Cape Cod and the Islands Association of Realtors, the Barnstable County Register of Deeds, and the Massachusetts Board of Real Estate Appraisers. In addition, numerous articles have been written quoting local realtors and appraisers supporting these increases in valuations. The average single-family value in Yarmouth increased from 453,100 to 546,100.
Can you repeat that, Andy?
Yep.
Go ahead.
The 453,100 to 546,100. The average single-family tax bill in Yarmouth increased by approximately 6.5% from 4,160 to 4,429. The fiscal year 2022 average single-family tax bill of 4,160 ranks as the 64th lowest single-family tax bill of the 351 towns in the Commonwealth. It's important to note that not all real estate appreciates in value at the same rate. 20% was the average assessment increase. Some assessments increased more than the average. Some assessments increased less than the average, and some assessments decreased. It, it, it's all dependent on the market activity. The Massachusetts real estate tax is an ad valorem tax, a Latin phrase meaning according to value. At present, all ad valorem property taxes in Yarmouth are levied based on the assessed value of the real estate and in compliance with current Massachusetts general laws, as well as Massachusetts Department of Revenue guidelines. Several proposals for levying real estate taxes have been suggested by well-intentioned taxpayers, such as California's Proposition 13 and the new anchor program in New Jersey. Unfortunately, those options are unavailable under current Massachusetts general law. The responsibility of the assessor is to value all the property in town. The assessor does not set the tax rate. The tax rate is determined each year as a result of the amount of money the town residents decide to spend at town meeting. Yarmouth has an open town meeting form of government where all the residents can participate in the democratic process. The residents share the responsibility for any increase or decrease in the total amount of spending and therefore any increase or decrease in the tax rate. The residents choose what services they would like the town to provide and determine whether they can afford those services. It's analogous to planning a family budget. So in effect, the residents of Yarmouth that participate in the town meeting process are participants in setting the tax rate. Each year, the tax rate setting process starts with the previous tax year's levy. The town can by statute levy an additional 2.5%, which is Proposition 2.5, and any new growth plus any exclusions or overrides, debt exclusions or overrides. This creates a new tax, a new levy limit that the town must stay within throughout the budgeting and annual town meeting process. Proposition 2.5 sets a limit on the entire tax levy for the town. While there is a limit to the overall increase in property taxes, the valuation program may result in increases or decreases in property taxes. Proposition 2.5 establishes a limit on the revenue a municipality can raise from property taxes. Proposition 2.5 does not limit the amount by which an individual tax bill may change from year to year. If any taxpayer feels their property is overvalued, they have an opportunity to appeal that valuation based on research they have completed that would support their contention. The application, along with the instructions, can be found on the town of Yarmouth's website. The town of Yarmouth typically averages about 40 appeals per year, abatements or appeals per year, which is very low for a community of approximately 18,000 parcels. What this demonstrates is that Yarmouth consistently does a very good job of assessment administration. That is supported by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, recognizing the Yarmouth Finance Department as a department that they recommend modeling best practices after for the tax rate setting. There are also various elderly exemptions and deferrals in a senior work-off program that taxpayers may consider if they meet the criteria. These statutory exemptions can also be found on the town of Yarmouth's website. In conclusion, I will convey to you a situation that happened to me while working in another community. A taxpayer came into my office, and she said that she was concerned that her valuation had more than doubled over last year's valuation. So I brought her into my office and, and we looked at her property. And sure enough, her valuation increased from 1.2 million to 3.4 million. We discussed the current real estate valuations and trends. And I asked her, would you sell your property for the 3.4 million that it's assessed at? And her response was absolutely not. The property is currently on the market for $5 million. So the moral of that story is that just because you experience a greater than expected increase in your property valuation doesn't make it wrong. Thank you, and I would be happy to try and answer any questions that the board may have.
Of course, the taxpayers come back to you should have been, it's on the market for that, but it's not an actual sale, and you're supposed to use actual sales, not listing information.
That is correct.
Payoff, fall asleep.
That is correct. But it is certainly an indication of, of what the market was doing at the time.
I get your point.
Yeah.
Questions?
Yeah, a question on the presentation, Andy. Thank you. First of all, thank you. And I appreciate your observation. Actually, it's not an observation, it's the statistic from the Department of Revenue that in terms of the average tax bill, we're among the lowest, among the lowest in the Commonwealth. I know for some folks that, you know, that it's helpful to hear that comparatively speaking, Yarmouth is still among those that are the lowest in the Commonwealth. And actually, if you look at the average tax bill of all the Cape towns. the Cape towns, Yarmouth is probably the second lowest of all towns on Cape Cod in terms of average tax bill. So Dennis is the only town, to my knowledge, that has a lower average tax bill. On the other hand, if you're comparing taxes paid per capita, we beat out Dennis on that benchmark. So benchmarks can say and reflect different values and different statistics. The thing that I think captures my attention is when we talk about the average tax bill for FY 23, comparing it to FY 22, we admit that the average tax bill is in excess of the 2.5. There's a perception among taxpayers, my tax bill should not be going up more than 2.5%. And I think you sort of laid it out for us that that's a cap on the overall levy, but that within that levy involving individual properties, some properties may go up, some properties may go down, but overall, the average in terms of the overall property tax levy is 2.5%. That hasn't changed.
Correct.
Right? Now, how do we factor in in this debt service, debt exemption, we've got two new schools? I mean, are those, those are not within the levy, they're added costs in the bill that go above and beyond what's been capped. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, were you going to cover that portion of it?
Actually, I did.
Okay.
What I talked about was the actual levy, which you start at your previous year's levy, which is 2.5%.
Yeah.
You can add in new growth-
Right.
2.5%. Excuse me. You can add in your 2.5% plus any new growth, which is new construction, as well as any overrides or debt exclusions.
Yeah, and my hope-
That gives you a new starting.
Okay. Well, my hope is that when we're done tonight on this segment, we'll have a much better understanding of why some of the tax bills have gone up above the 2.5%. And I think we need to have a better handle on terms of where the exempted debt, the school debt, we've got two school projects, you know, how that factors in. You know, for years, Yarmouth has been able to keep a real strong lid on its debt. And you might say that we were below average in terms of debt that we've piled up. Let's put it this way, we've held the line significantly and I credit prior boards, prior administrators, and obviously Ed Senio keeps a really solid control and guidance in terms of our finances. But I know with the schools, at some point, that stuff needs to, is going to kick in. And it made, did, I guess the question is, did it kick in for the FY 23 bill? And to some degree, do we have an average on that? That would be helpful to learn.
Maybe I can help put a little bit of a finer point on it. And I think to address those issues, the first thing that I want to comment upon is, you know, we all know the town's finance department is extremely strong. And just addressing the assessing, you know, it's clear, looking at the numbers, the rigor of the Massachusetts system is quite high. The requirements that we maintain 100% in the standard deviation studies. And I would just say, the Town of Yarmouth assessing department has an extremely high quality and record with the Department of Revenue in terms of their regulation of our system, which is borne out by some of the information that you see. There are not a lot of successful challenges to the values that are established through this department because of the rigorous nature that they go through to set the values. And, you know, the key issue that we're confronting, and I think some of these numbers will bear this out, is that the problem with the fiscal year 2023 tax bills is clearly in the unprecedented, well, I won't even say unprecedented, but it's just in a short period of time, we had a very large increase in the inflation of real estate costs here on Cape Cod, specifically in Yarmouth. And he's already given the statistics. In just this year alone, there's been a 20% increase in the valuations. That's astounding, astounding. It's what's created these problems. And, you know, the other big issue, I saw an excellent email that a local resident with us this evening sent with, I thought some, you know, great ideas, how can the property tax system be overhauled? And, you know, the critical issue is that if you compare Massachusetts to other areas in the nation where property tax regulation has occurred, there's a fundamental difference. And it was discussed this evening, in Massachusetts, the state legislature specifically through Proposition 2.5 has regulated the dollar amount total that can be raised through taxation. That's how Proposition 2.5 works. And in that process, they've actually strengthened the guarantee that the local towns ensure that every property is supposedly valued at 100%. Now, that's the opposite. In other areas of the country, property tax relief has been focused on the assessment, whether it has, in Proposition 13 freezes the level of assessment at the level where you bought the property. There's other types of property tax relief that are geared towards those individual assessments. But the problem is in Massachusetts, we have, you know, one charge and one charge only statutorily, and that is to make sure that those, from the assessing standpoint, those properties are valued at a very specific small tolerance from what the market value is. And so, so their hands are tied. They establish the values and here we get hit, townwide, 20% increase. But I think the point was that the average tax bill of all the classes of property did not go up 20%. The 20% was reserved for those neighborhoods and areas that grew in value faster than other areas in the community because with that increase in the value, the tax rate went down. So the actual tax rate in FY 23 is significantly lower than it was in 22. Now, what I just want to focus on for a minute is how this relates to the data that was provided by the assessors in terms of, you know, we say the money that was raised in addition to 2.5. What is the additional money that's been raised? And this chart shows, basically that pie chart consists of last year's tax levy, which is in blue, and in the little yellow and gray, and there's a sliver of lighter blue that's the small area of that, those are the increases in fiscal year 2023. And I want to go over what those were. So you get last year's property tax levy as your base, and then there's a top 2.5 increase, and that went up 1,006, it wasn't a 2.5%, property taxes went up overall 2.2% from the allowed 2.5 increase to meet the additional educational costs primarily, other costs we talked about when we did the budget, the insurance, those types of things. Now, there was a major increase for us. The debt service in the town has been extremely low and it has been low for a long time. But we brought in FY 23, an additional new debt exclusion for the middle school. And the voters did not pay that total exclusion, the total amount that was raised, and I have it on one of my sheets here, was maybe $1.4 million and change in new debt for the new intermediate school. That came on this year, 1.4 million. Now, some of the other projects that are excluded debt decreased. So not all of the debt excluded projects that increased. So the net, the net debt exclusions increased by $1.1 million. And that represents a 1.6% increase in property taxes overall townwide for FY 23. So there was no override, so that number is zero. And the new growth, which is the property taxes derived from those buildings that were just built, or major renovations that property didn't exist last year, that was 288,000, 24%. But that doesn't go on the existing homes. That is only the taxes from the new property. But even factoring that in, that with the 2.5 and the new debt, property taxes, which is that sliver in the blue, increased approximately 3.8% from the previous year. So what that tells you is that any increase in your property tax bill that is over 3.8% is directly attributable to the increase in the property values. And with the 3.8%, again, the tax rate went down, but I, you know, looked at the numbers, if, you know, one individual did see 19 or 20% increase in their property tax, remember, that indicates a very significant increase in the value, which the Board of Assessors does not have the authority to manipulate or change because of the rigor of the tests that they have to provide in order for the tax rate to become certified. So I hope that gives you a little more information.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that. But I think for a lot of folks, you know, the average tax bill going up 6.5%, I get some of that, yeah. What I'd love to figure out is if there's a way to break that down, that increase, how you break that down. Is it, is it unwise for residents? I mean, that's what I'd like, that's what I'd like to see us try to get at today. I think it's helpful to examine the debt exclusions and so forth, but I think overall, what the, what are some of the other factors that come into play?
I think the biggest factor coming into play-
Is the values?
Is that if we go back to that ad valorem, it's according to value. If your value went up substantially, then naturally, the tax bill's going to-
Right.
-increase probably more than the average. Again, as I tell people all the time, the tax rate, it's really, it's a math problem. We're responsible for the valuation end of it. The other end of it is the money that's spent. Divide one by the other, that gives you the tax rate. Our responsibility is the valuations. So when you, when you come into the assessor's office, we have to continually have people refocus and say, what we deal with is valuations. You need to focus on the valuation. Is the property worth that? And yes, I understand it may have been a large increase, but was it warranted? What does the market tell us? All we're doing is holding a mirror to the market, and that's what we're doing. So that's what we try to get people to refocus and look at that. Could it mean that there are some things wrong with your property? Absolutely. That's, that's why there's an appeal process built into it.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I don't want to, again, beat a dead horse here. I just know that there are many residents in town whose property tax bill went up more than 2.5%. The average tax bill went up 6.5%.
Absolutely.
And I'm not sure just the increase in the valuation alone is something that's going to find a great deal of satisfaction in terms of helping explain why their bill went up as much as it did. I appreciate what you're saying. I don't dispute anything that you're saying, but I think there's some folks who are really trying to come away from this discussion, having a better handle on exactly why their bill went way up beyond the 2.5%.
And I think that Mr. Wirt now handled the other half of the equation, which is, you know, the budget. And I can give you some examples. A lot of these properties that went up happened to be on the north side. Not a lot of sales happen on the north side. If you're looking at valuations and you don't have sales in an area, and you say, well, okay, let me look at comparable areas, and it looks like comparable areas went up 3%, 4%. So over the course of the year, you may increase 3%, 4% because there just isn't any sales. All of a sudden, you have sales that are showing 20%, 25%, 30% increases. You have to reflect that. So is it possible that the valuations were low to begin with because of lack of sales? Absolutely. But again, if one value is going up by $250,000 and another valuation is going up by 100,000, they're going to be different increases in the tax bills. Am I, is that not?
I don't, I don't, I don't want to drag this out. I want to give plenty of time to the other board members. I'm happy to come back and revisit some of this after they've been, they've concluded and they've asked questions, but I don't want to min up the conversation here.
I'm actually content to defer. I found the explanation helpful and the debt part of it really helpful because I was trying to understand how that all fit in here. But I'm content at this point. Appreciate it.
Dorcas?
Given the explosion we've had in real estate over the last couple of years, to me, it came as no surprise. I mean, I could see valuations in my own neighborhood and in other neighborhoods in town that just went up significantly. I mean, when I looked at what I paid for my house and what they were selling for in my neighborhood, a big difference. So I'm not surprised if my evaluation went up. That's all I have to say.
So you're saying you'd be welcome to another increase?
Not welcome, but you know, on the offside, I could always sell the house, I suppose.
Peter?
Might yep that way.
Mr. Machado, thank you very much for the explanation, and I understand it. Ms. Morris asked about Proposition 13 and very quickly, and I know it's not applicable to the great Commonwealth of Massachusetts, your tax rate is based upon 1% of the purchase price of the property, which remains at that until you, till you sell a house. You can go an additional 1% per year for inflation. And if you do, if you do renovations, that cost is included in it. Otherwise, that, your rate stays the same. It's not available in Massachusetts. And actually, Proposition 2.5 in part was based upon what happened in Proposition 13 in California. Again, thank you very much for, much for your explanation. And my tax bill went up more than 6%, so thank you very much for that, too.
But you're not welcoming any future increases?
That would be correct.
Like Dorcas, we'll get her.
I know it's going to come.
You know, what I'm used to in the legal circle is kind of a very scientific approach to valuation. You get an appraiser, he goes out, he looks at three comps at least that's sold in a short period of time and comes up with a value. It sounds to me like in your general approach, that you're valuing more areas and neighborhoods than individual properties. Am I correct on that?
Absolutely. Absolutely. We're doing mass appraisal. We're not, if you go to refinance or you buy a property, they're doing a fee appraisal. They're appraising one property. We're appraising masses of properties based on the small sales sample that happened. We're doing cost modeling more.
How far does that area extend? Let's take like the south side, just only because that's pretty much as close to where we are here. Say all the properties from, let's forget the ones on Bass River because they're in a separate class, they're own waterfront properties. But all those other properties south of 28, let's say going up before you hit Lewis Bay, because then you get another spike with waterfront properties. But all those in between, is that like an area you value as a location? I'm aware, how do you segment out these areas?
Basically-
New area evaluation?
Delineations are done geographically and, and basically according to the actual sales. Again, you let the sales dictate what the neighborhood delineations are.
Okay. So if sales are going for $4,000 up until a certain point, and then you start seeing them go up to five something, that'd be the line to demarcation for valuing the next area?
Correct.
You look at those rough- You look at those rough differentials in average sales prices. Now, you, you know, oftentimes when you, you hear people talk about sales and values, they talk about median increases, and you're just using average increases, correct?
Yes.
Okay. You don't use any median data or anything like that?
In statistical analysis, you're using the medians because it's clearly, it's more stable. The state in its reporting uses the average.
Or just using averages only?
Yes.
Okay. So an individual should be aware, because there can be disparities. It happens. I've seen it before. And if somebody gets, if there's an average, you know, the example you'll use about a waterfront property, I get that. That's in a class of its own, and the, and the escalation in value of those properties doesn't mirror other non-waterfront properties there. You gotta, you gotta do apples to apples when you're dealing with waterfront properties or properties in close proximity to the water. But aside from that, if you're dealing with just general neighborhood properties and, and one of those residents spikes up to a twenty percent increase and everybody else is, let's say, it's six, six and a half, how do you explain that? And, and does that indicate, hey, maybe there's a mistake here?
Absolutely.
Maybe this guy's a rebate candidate because he's not on the curve?
Sure. We, we can tell you, you know, we, we certainly aren't going to sit back and say, I guarantee you, all eighteen thousand parcels are correct. There's probably errors out there. We don't know where they are when you're dealing with mass appraisal. There's eighteen thousand of them. That's why there's an appeal process built into the process. So by all means, if that's the case, I would, I would have, you know, tell people to avail themselves of the appeal process, and we'll look at everything on an individual basis.
Aside from waterfront, which I keep ruling out, because I know that's, like I said, a class unto itself, have north side properties about increased in value greater than south side properties in general?
I think we're seeing more north side sales than we have in the past. And I think some of the increases are certainly larger than we've seen from some of the south side properties.
Right. Based on the information you gave us previously, the presentation, how on God's earth could somebody's property go down in value? You said some properties actually go down. I can't envision that.
Sure. Again, it's, it's according to the sales.
Junk properties are going for four hundred thousand and up, right? Junk.
Agreed. But it's according to the sales. And I can give you an example for, and, and I did have this discussion with, with, with Dorcas, that in the, what's the name of the condo?
Heatherwood.
Heatherwood. In Heatherwood, the sale prices in twenty twenty-one plummeted. They were around the two hundred thousand dollar range and even more, and they plummeted. And they were somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Whether it was just, you know, families that just wanted to get rid of the properties after the, the residents passed away or whatever, I, I don't know specifically. I can tell you that in twenty twenty-two, just as you had mentioned, we're seeing those rebound. Those are now selling at the two hundred thousand range again. We had to recognize the sales according to the laws. So those values actually decreased. And they probably will go up again in the twenty twenty-four, reflective of the sales from twenty twenty-two.
Did you say the twenty twenty-threes were based on twenty twenty-one?
Correct.
Because I know Mark or, or somebody said twenty twenty-two, but I think you actually said twenty twenty-one.
Yeah. Your, your assessment date is always January one. So January one of twenty twenty-two, no twenty-two sales had occurred yet. So you have to look at twenty-one sales, the previous twelve months.
So if you're always looking at a prior year, in general, because we can only talk generalities, the properties are not going to reflect fair market value, assuming a normal inflation rate?
They're going to reflect fair market value as of January one, because that's always the assessment date. Now, January one, twenty twenty-two, that's the assessment date. That's a snapshot in time. What is the value of that property as of that date? Now, you could have been using sales from December of twenty twenty-one. You could have also been using sales from January of twenty twenty-one, sales that are eleven months old. So there's always going to be a lag, yes. But your assessment date is always January one.
Which is why properties generally sell for a higher price than their assessed values, in general?
Correct.
Because of that lag? So if, if somebody gets a tax bill that just seems to be off the curve, and again, I'm accepting your hypothetical, because I think that's on the extreme end. Not that you're extreme, but the property isn't three point four million, that, that's not indicative of the average yet, of the average value of Yarmouth real estate. But if somebody has a so-called average house, nothing special, and they see a, a spike of like twenty percent, is that generally an indication something's wrong? And if you had a spike like twenty percent on taxes, what would you expect? What kind of? You, and you would have perhaps renovations, right? Extensive renovations, maybe. Or, or maybe you'd be near the water. Is, is that what would drive a property value that high?
Well, I, I, I will, I will address that, but I, but I will also tell you what we always tell people when they come in. We will address values. We don't address taxes. We address the valuations, because that's what we do.
Correct.
The valuations.
I understand.
So if the value increased significantly, which caused the value to increase significantly, yes, in, in your scenario, it was probably due to some construction of some sort. It could be due to an error. Again, as I say, we're not immune to them. They're out there.
And what's the period of time that a person has to challenge that valuation?
You have thirty days from the date of the tax bill or November first.
Whichever is?
Whichever's, whichever's greater.
So thirty days from the date of the bill?
Of the mailing of the bill or November first. We always get our bill out usually in August or September. We generally give people more time in order to apply for the abatements.
That's not a lot of time, though, because a person just can't come in and say, hey, my tax bill went, went up. Generally, don't they have to provide you with some documentation of other similar values that are properties that are like theirs, but they're lower valued and?
Give them an instructional sheet as to, you know, what, what an abatement is for, how to go about doing that. And yes, they state their contention, and then they support that contention, and would have to bring it or include it.
They have maybe a month to do that?
I'm sorry?
They maybe have a month to do that?
In, in, in most cases, if, if people get their bill out October one, they would have that case. I think we got our bill out in early September, so they had over two months to, to do that. And we generally, I think the latest we've sent the tax bill was probably this, this mid-September. We're usually in August.
Are those abatements heard by the board?
Yes, they're brought before the board.
How many are the three members?
Currently, there are two members.
Two. That'd be, that'd be an interesting majority. If there was a deadlock on valuation. We only have two?
Currently, yes.
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned that there's a November one deadline for filing an appeal on the valuation. Is there a deadline for making an application for hardship or some, if, you know, again?
For statutory exemption?
Or for some way to get secure relief in terms of being able, the, the, again, I don't want to sound, I, I keep harping on this, but for many people in Yarmouth, it's a challenge paying taxes. For them, times are tough. So is there a deadline that has passed? I mean, can still someone?
Statutory exemptions, the deadline is April first.
April first. So they could still pursue that up until April of two thousand twenty-three?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's helpful.
And what kind of relief would be available under the statutory exemption?
Monetary relief or what are the criteria?
Oh.
Criteria would, actually, I'm, I'm going to kick that over to Tara, because she's certainly more versed in that than I am. She deals with that on a daily basis.
So we have the forty-one C, the clause forty-one C, which is for the elderly, and that is the senior exemptions. So the criteria would be you would have to be sixty-five years old as of July first. So for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, you would have to be sixty-five as of July first of twenty twenty-two. You would have to submit proof for a first-time filer that you are indeed sixty-five or older as of that date. You have to own the home. If it's in a trust, you would have to provide your trust documents. You would also need to provide your prior year's income. You would have to provide your assets as of July first of this year. That does tend to confuse people at times, but it is clear. And we do also send out the guidelines, the filing guidelines on these, with the income limits and the asset limits. And there is a standard social security deduction. We went before a town meeting, you, our Board of Selectmen approved an article for, to go on the town meeting warrant several years ago. So we increased the exemption amount from five hundred dollars to a thousand dollars. We also, several years ago, with the help of the Board of Selectmen, were able to submit an article for the town meeting warrant, and that was maybe two or three, three years ago, I think, to actually update, based on the Consumer Pricing Index, those asset and income limits, as well as the, the deduction. Actually, the state does the deduction. They just hand us a total every year and say, here you go. Here's your, here's your deduction amount. So in essence, I think.
So for those residents that are struggling with figuring out how to pay this bill, there's still time?
Absolutely. Still until April first. That was increased through the state several years back as well. And then also, just to kind of, we feel very deeply ourselves for people that are struggling to pay taxes. We understand. We, we, we talk to the people. We take the calls, you know, and it, it, it's tough. We, we understand. We also have six senior workshops every year to explain how the exemption works. We do a presentation on that, as well as we have a video tutorial online that literally takes people line item by line item. Item one, name. Okay, write your name here. Address and so on and so forth, all the way through the application, including handing out the, the instructions as well. We provide one-on-one, sit down right here in this hearing room, actually. And we sit down with people, one-on-one, review the application. If they did not understand the tutorial, you know, that, that, that does unfortunately happen. We advertise the schedule for the exemptions for the workshops in the senior milestone. And that is advertised for four months out of the year, May, June, July, August. We hold those workshops in July and August. We don't hold them prior to July first because you can't file until after July first. And even on July first, nobody has their asset statements. Generally, the asset statements would be, it just needs to include that July first timeframe. You know, so it would be like a, a bank statement, for instance, would be June fifteenth through July fifteenth. And then there's also a tax deferral program where people could defer their taxes. Sometimes the, the income is a little higher for some people on the deferral. So the taxpayer would defer their taxes. They would have to pay their CPA and the Water Infrastructure, Water Infrastructure Investment Fund surcharge. But they would be able to defer the tax up, or whatever portion they wanted, up to the entire thing. Upon sale of the house, the, the town would receive their money back plus eight percent interest. And we do file a lien on the property to ensure the, the taxes get paid back.
On the tax deferral, doesn't the interest still run on the bill?
It's, it's, it's eight percent upon.
Reduced from the statutory rate to eight?
Well, they're exempting.
Isn't the normal bill, if it's not paid, running, what's, what's that, like fourteen percent?
No, that's the incentive, the incentive for when they defer it, when the estate is either sold or, or passed along to the heirs, that's when it kicks into sixteen percent. So the incentive is to pay it before it gets to that because it's only eight percent interest that it's incurred over the amount of years you've deferred it.
So on the deferral of the eight percent, the tax is not paid, but the eight percent is accruing?
Correct.
Is that compounded?
Yes.
Why am I not surprised by that answer? So it is compounded. And then when the estate gets resolved, all of that becomes due at that point in time. I mean, you're not going to sell the estate the day after the guy dies. So how long do you have before the higher rate kicks in?
I believe it begins that day. I can certainly.
So let's, let's say, let's say a taxpayer dies November first, and he's been on the eight percent accrual. When does the, what was the higher rate?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. I thought it was fourteen. Sixteen?
Date of death.
Date of death?
Yes.
So if it takes them a few, three months or four months to liquidate the property, which is probably going to take them that long to prob, if, if it has to go through probate, they have to pay sixteen percent from date of death till date of settlement, plus eight percent and everything else prior to that. Is that right?
Yes.
Yes. And Chairman Stone, the fourteen percent is if you pay your tax bill late. I think that's what you're referring to.
Fourteen is what?
If you pay your tax bill late, it's fourteen percent.
If you pay it?
If you pay your tax bill late beyond the due date.
The late fee.
That's the, that's the percentage I think you recalled. Because you mentioned fourteen percent. You were right. That's if you don't pay it on time.
Okay.
And I also want to point out just a couple of other things for the
Please do.
Senior tax exemption, besides all of the other work that's done. The Finance Department with the assessors put in automation to pre-fill the elderly exemption forms, not their financials, because that changes every year. But we pre-fill it. We do it for the blind. We do it for the veterans, so that we make it as easy as possible for them to complete those, those documents and get those exemptions every year. And often, or on some occasions, we go to the home of the individual to actually help them complete the forms. So, you know, they do a great job in trying to do that outreach. We actually gave the Community Action Council with the key assistance, a form letter. They actually took their mailing list, because they don't want to divulge that information to us. They did a mass mailer indicating what our exemption programs are, reached out to nonprofits on what our exemption programs are locally. And, you know, just every way that we can try to think of to, you know, get those that deserve those tax breaks, those types of tax breaks, our assessing department does. They, they do a great job with that.
Stay handy. I have a question for Tara, but you might want to comment on it, too.
And while you're thinking, I also wanted to point out that on the Finance Department website, there's a tax calculator. So if somebody's thinking about a tax exemption, you can actually put in the tax exemption amount that's being discussed, and it will generate what that tax rate impact would be per one thousand dollars. And that's a DOI's tool, and we link up to that.
Very good.
Based on the information that Tara was talking about, that people would have to provide to get certain relief. You're talking about income and assets. Is there some rough yardstick in terms of those limits above which people? which people shouldn't waste their time applying because they're not gonna qualify?
Yes. I don't have the exact figures.
Very well, but you know what I mean.
I think I know what you mean. In essence, are you asking what are the limits?
Yeah.
And what is the Social Security deduction? So the asset limits for a married couple are somewhere in the neighborhood of $56,000. The, the actual totals I'm giving you off my memory, which is with, once we introduce the Consumer Pricing Index, those amounts change annually. The, the exact amounts are on the website. There is, within the assessor's page, under, right in the middle of it, it says, there's a blurb about tax, tax relief, and there is a link directly to the personal exemptions form, and these figures are on there, and they do change annually, as well as the deduction. The deduction amount is actually pre-printed on the application, which is also on the website, under tax forms. So the, as I mentioned, for the, the assets for a married couple would be somewhere in the neighborhood of, and I think it's actually gone up, I might have transposed to 65,000. The income would be roughly 37,000, and there is a deduction, and the deduction amount is roughly in the neighborhood of, well, what do you know?
That wouldn't be Ed's computer, would it?
You know, this is the first time I've had Ed's computer. I'm, I'm kinda debating on whether or not I wanna give it back. I like this. So the, the only thing he didn't get me was a pair of glasses. But that's okay. I don't need them yet. Previous calendar years, income couldn't exceed, we'll, we'll just, we'll flip over to single for a moment.
Need it exactly.
No, you don't. It's just shy of $24,000. If married, that would be $36,000 roughly, and that's after subtracting the Social Security deduction. The whole estate, the assets, wouldn't be able to exceed, if you're single, roughly 48,000, and if you're married, roughly 66 and a half thousand.
Are these assets would be exclusive of the real estate?
Exclusive of the real estate, yeah. And then the vehicles. Honestly, both their assets wouldn't.
Vehicles either?
No, not really. What we ask for.
Account, stocks, bonds, stuff like that.
CDs, IRAs, annuities, yeah. Yep. And that's on the application as well. It, you know, it gives you these details.
When you look at the annuity or IRA, you're looking at the principal sum that remains. For example, let's say somebody's got 300,000 in an IRA, but their required minimum distribution is 10,000. What do you look at for qualifications? The 300,000?
It's what the value is as of July 1st, and if there was an income withdrawal on that from the prior year, it counts as their income. If it's on, if they filed, in other words.
Considering the balance.
But it's the prior year's income. So let's say they, they received a $10,000 withdrawal, distribution, whatever you wanna call, you know, they filed the tax return, maybe some did, maybe some didn't, but we always look at tax returns. That is our preferred method for determining income, but not everybody files one. If we have, and it's listed on the tax return, that that was received as income from the prior year, then that's counted as income for the prior year. Because, and then come July 1st, it's worth whatever the statement says it's worth.
Okay, so you're looking at both ends of it.
It's, it's two different dates.
And the capital end of it as well, yeah. Which is kinda prejudicial in a way to people that have IRAs, because if somebody has a pension, that pension's obviously funded, but they don't have that principal component because they just keep getting it, let's say for a lifetime. You know, take a teacher, for example. They, they get paid forever, right? So to fund that privately, you'd have to have maybe a million dollars perhaps in an IRA or something like that to get a lifetime payout. But they don't have that capital to show, which could disqualify them. But anyway.
Yeah, the list is pretty comprehensive on the, on the assets.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm set for now.
Anybody else? Peter.
Ed, you indicated that, that the, that the interest, it, it capitalizes, compounds? Is that, I don't, I don't believe, I don't believe it does. I don't believe it be, I don't believe it becomes principal at all. And if you are, if you are gonna capitalize it, do you capitalize it daily, monthly, quarterly, yearly? I can't, I can't believe you, it's.
Yeah, let me check that.
Right.
Okay. Good point. We'll check into that because that's important, obviously. All right. All good. No further questions. We'll suspend with this informative hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Budget policy statement. That's fine. I'm surprised to hear we, I, I think I remember the board telling us quite a while back that they only had a couple of members. I'm surprised we still are limited to two members on that board. We're gonna have to try to do something to get.
We will.
Third member.
It is.
That's what I was wondering. We haven't had any information come my way that there was an opening on the.
There's a lot to it, though, a lot in terms of training and stuff like that.
Yeah, it's difficult. That's been always a difficult appointment, Phil.
But I just, I mean, logistically, if you don't, first, if you have a disagreement on whether or not abatement should be granted with a board of two, how's that gonna work?
Yeah, I think generally the, it's, it's easy to find consensus among, I mean, if you talk about boards, where there's a, yeah, that's, that's one where it's easy to find consensus among even, even a dwindling membership.
So in your packet, before we jump into the actual policy recommendation itself, I wanna call to your attention, there's a fairly powerful little spreadsheet that provides the basis for what we looked at in the policy recommendation that is the analysis of revenues for the coming fiscal year. And in, in addition to the upcoming fiscal year, it's, I, I, I think very nice in the sense that it's got a total of eight years' history for all of the revenues of the town. And so it, it shows things, and, and in here, you know, we'll have a little bit on the property tax and, and how that's looked in terms of how Prop 2 and 1/2 keeps the, the levy down. And in, I wanna just go over some of the highlights and what we're looking at for the revenues for, for fiscal year 24, because I, I think it, it really helps shape the direction of things. And, and I, I do wanna acknowledge Ed Centio, who has been a tremendous resource for me. I have a lot of, you know, experience in municipal government and things, but in terms of Yarmouth, it's, it's such a, a dense and, and highly detailed financial environment. It's really only been, you know, with, with that kinda collaboration that I've been able to, you know, wrap my arms around not only, you know, the, the current, but we've got the, the full eight-year breadth of history, which helps us fully analyze the financial trending, where things are going, highlight what those revenue trends are. And, and first and foremost, and I, I think this is very interesting, given the discussion that we just had, the overall composition of the town's revenues for FY '24 remains, you know, fairly little change from the previous year in that we can see, and I'll use my mouse here if it can show up, because that'll show up for the folks at home as well. These property taxes that we talk about, and, and this is one of the structural problems that we face here on Cape Cod, that, you know, is, is burdensome for us, is that 71% of the town's revenues are derived from the property tax. And, you know, it's my strong feeling that that should be a lower number than that because the problem with the property taxes, as we've just discussed, it is essentially a regressive tax in that low-income populations are, you know, behind the eight ball a little bit because as a regressive tax, the lower your income, the higher of a percentage of your income is taken up with that tax, which is differentiated from the state collects an income tax, which the higher your income, the, it doesn't change the percentage of that tax on, on your income. So for equity standpoint, it would be a much more positive situation if the state, which we have 1%, and 1% alone of the town's revenue comes from state revenue, which is the only progressive tax that, that we have available, and we're forced by the state with all the regulation of the property tax at the local level to rely overly heavily on that. And so one thing that can be done to help local residents that are impacted by these property taxes, and, and when you don't have the income to support these rapid increases in the value, value of your property, you can't very well sell your house and, you know, to pay your taxes. But we can continue to work to lobby the state to increase that level of state aid as a portion of our, of our overall budget. And, and in a perfect world, comparable to other areas in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, this 1% is at least 25%. And that, like, should be a, a goal of ours. And, and as you can see, the non-property tax local revenues, such as all of the, the fees that we collect and the building permits and the user fees, you know, that's about 28% of the budget. And if the state was about 28% of the budget, that would cut the amount that we would be forced to raise in property taxes as an overall portion of the budget. And I think it would provide some significant relief to local property taxpayers. I think it's an important point, but this is structurally how our revenues are looking, shaping up for the next fiscal year, and.
Can we go, can we go back to that previous slide?
Certainly.
I don't think you'll get a debate from anybody on this board about that 1% and the state aid number being, needing to be bigger. I think that has been a situation that we've been stuck with for years. Yarmouth has been getting screwed on state aid for as long as I can remember. And what it has done is exactly as you have said, is it has screwed property taxpayers. We're paying a, a heavy burden in terms of the share. And unfortunately, Yarmouth's not alone. I mean, there are lots of other towns, particularly on the Cape, where the perception is, is that we're wealthy because of the valuations that have been set up and that whole process. And so we're, we're basically been shut out of being able to get at least what I would consider even a fair share of state aid. So if you think that there's a strategy or a way for us collectively with this board, maybe working with other boards, to increase that 1%, I think we need to have that conversation soon. There's a new administration that has come in. There's, obviously, there'll be some new members of the legislative delegation. I'm, I'm pleased that you think that we may have a shot of changing that because I think for many years, boards of Selectmen and Yarmouth and elsewhere on Cape Cod have been basically resigned to the fact that state aid is something that we're just gonna continue to get short-changed on. I, I think we have an argument to make. I think there's a compelling argument out there. I just have found very little interest among select boards on Cape Cod to address it. So I guess if there's gonna be a revolution, let it start here in Yarmouth. And if we're gonna start raising hell, let it start here. If you can help us put together a convincing package on what that number should be, I, I think, I, I don't wanna let this moment go by.
Quite frankly, I, I mean, I, I don't mean to get your, your hopes up. The, the problem in, is, is a structural one in Massachusetts where the state is, aid is distributed really along the lines of the legislative districts in, in the state where the, the power resides. And if we get 1%, the, you know, the, the Boston area communities where they have the power in the legislature are, are the ones that are getting the higher percentages. So with the number of votes that we have on Cape Cod, and, and this is the resignation where it, it comes in, that if you go to put equity into the system, people recognize and, and you don't have enough votes. And so what I would say is, I, I do have a legislative strategy that, you know, maybe you could think about, and, and I'd like to, maybe at a future time, talk in a little more detail about this. But I don't think it's possible, after trying this for many years, to change the formula so that it's more equitable towards our community. What I do think is possible is a legislative process that creates a circuit breaker, that I, I, I think that what needs to be done is, is not change how it's distributed, but address this 1%. And if you've got some communities getting 40%, some communities getting 30%, and some communities getting 25%, what we're looking for is a simple legislative circuit breaker that says that if a community, because of the intricacies of the formula, there's no one-size-fits-all formula, is disadvantaged to the point where they get below 10% in state aid, then there's a floor. In other words, the floor isn't zero. Right now, the floor is zero, and we're right on it. Maybe if the floor was 5%, I, I choose 10%. Now, now that's a way of not taking money away from communities that have it, not going to battle with the rest of the Commonwealth, but leveraging what legislative authority that we do have to create that circuit breaker. And I just ask you, keep that in mind, and I'd like to engage in that discussion with the legislative delegation. In fact, we had a meeting with our state senator just yesterday, who said that he was very anxious to come in and brief the board and get your legislative priorities as well. And so that's my, my priority is just a simple circuit breaker that makes it so that the floor for state aid in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is not zero. It is a slightly higher number. So.
Fantastic.
That is just a little bit on the composition of the, the revenues. And I won't go through the tremendous detail, but I, I want you to know that I can. I mean, if you folks are interested in, in a, a level of detail that's higher, in terms of the analysis of the composition of these local revenues, I'm, I'm prepared, you know, to do that. We're gonna have a lot of discussion on this budget moving forward. What we're at today is just, this is the kickoff piece to give some guidance to departments. But I, but I do have a tremendous amount of detail that we've sort of vetted as a team, and, and we're prepared to go out now. And again, with the state aid, as you can see, it is a product of political forces. Out of all of our revenue sources, I want you, you know, to find a witch hat like, like this. It's ridiculous that the level of state aid from year to year, you know, changes so drastically. It's up and down, but for us, the bottom line is, in terms of numbers, in our overall budget that is just over $100 million, the net state aid that we get is less than 800,000. So that's the 1%. It's, you know.
It's pathetic.
It's kinda ridiculous. What we're looking at from '23 to '24, you know, you could see a little bit more of an increase than we're showing it, it flat. But even if it increased by 10%, we're still under a million, and it's not gonna have a, a material impact on the town's revenues. What I, I think shows a, a better picture towards the, maybe the sustainability, so, kind of a good side of, of these non-property tax local revenues that are comprised of, you know, laundry list of things, the motor vehicle excise is one of the leaders there, and, and also a lot of fees and fines and, you know, things that are related to the economy, they don't do a lot of growth, but. economy, they don't do a lot of growth, but they have been very stable. And as we talked about last year, you can see that the impacts of the pandemic that hit us in 2021 brought our estimates, you know, down quite a bit, and it created quite a financial challenge for the community, which the community responded very positively to that challenge. And as we moved into FY '22 and FY '23, we saw rapidly those collections grow back to the levels that they were pre-pandemic, and just a hair above. And, and based on, on these collections, which, you know, have been very, very strong, we, we estimate that the line will continue, as you can see, with somewhat conservative bent that we like to take. We've slowed that trend of growth down. What we'll probably see is collections continue at a rate slightly higher, but for budgeting purposes, we, we want to keep that a little bit lower. But I, I think the signs of the local estimated receipts in our local economy, you know, despite the misgivings that, you know, we all share about the, the current state of the economy and inflation, what we see is the local estimated receipts continuing at a, a pretty solid level. And, you know, these come in at about, just the local estimated receipts piece is about 19 million for the year. Total non-property tax revenues come in at 29 million, and it's very strong. And then now those begin to incorporate all of our enterprise funds. That's the, the real delta between the local estimated receipts and the total non-property tax revenues are those enterprise funds, which have been very strong. And we're not forecasting strong growth in those revenues because the budgets, you know, will be keeping, you know, fairly low. And, and remember, the, the user rates are calculated based on the, the budgets. But the key here is sustainability. We have very strong and sustainable user fees that will continue. And the, the third major area, again, is, you know, the, the elephant in the room, the 71% of the property tax levy. And I, I think one thing that shows here, if you take a look at '21 to '24, you know, the property tax levy, levy is not fast-growing, it's very slow-growing, you know, over time, it's very steady. Now, this is a tribute to, I, I, I think, you know, largely our real estate-dominated economy, property values have been very strong. One of the reasons why we're a double A-plus and soon to be a triple A is in here, soon to be a triple A. I, I will say we'll get there. We, we, we were darned close this year. The power behind the property taxes and the values, you know, there's a negative side to seeing values go up. Very disruptive. We don't like to see it grow that fast. But over time, you know, this 10-year period, to see the values stay strong, that's what you look for in a strong, sustainable economy, and, and we have that. And one point that I would make is that, again, looking at '21 to '24, here's a point where the town has brought on a brand-new regional technical high school, right? Substantially just redone, that's a major project. A, a new DPW garage, and the, the DY Intermediate School. All of these projects were, were on the books by 2023, and then they remained for 2024. Yet, the overall trend line of property taxes remains completely stable, in fact, growing a little bit less than it grew around 1920, '21. So I, I, I think that's a positive sign. You're not seeing spikes
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, if I could just make an observation.
Yep.
You know, when you look, the, the town of Yarmouth has generally been pretty stingy in terms of increasing services. I mean, I think we've pretty much flatlined in services for many, many years. We have departments where the needs have grown, but the capability to address those needs has not grown. You know, we've talked as a board about burnout, you know, in some of these areas. So I, I think, you know, and then we had to address the challenges of, of COVID. Just as we thought we were sort of turning around the financial picture, we found ourselves having to sort of put in place some austere measures during, during COVID. And now those measures are paying off a bit because we're now in a very strong free cash position, and you have funds to utilize for reserves and for, for other purposes. What I'm curious about is in this number, Bob, does this include the exempted debt? Is that just the levy itself? Do we have a chart that shows the debt at all? Is that in one of the lists? Because I think one of the things that I'm interested in making sure that we keep an eye on is debt service as well as exempted debt, because those, those numbers are going to change, and then what our projections are. So I hope, maybe if not tonight, maybe in, when we revisit the budget, we can look at our debt projections and our exempted debt projections, and then how, how those numbers look, maybe not just now, but
Sure.
How they've looked going backward, and then how we anticipate they might look going forward, because we're going to have to figure in a host of other capital projects in that that might be helpful to get some sense of where we're headed.
So like I say, keep in mind, these numbers do include all of the excluded debt. So you, you've taken on a, a couple of projects, and it has not changed your trajectory. And to give you a sense, the, the debt was extremely low, and in the last couple of years, we took our new projects to the extent of the total excluded debt for FY '23, and let's see, in '24, it will be actually a tiny bit less, because, you know, the projects we, everything's online in '23. There's nothing new coming online in '24 for an excluded debt. And the total debt exclusions will be about $4,303,000 for FY '24. And I, I have those, it's, it's not charted, but it's in, in the sheet that you have here. I've got eight years of it. Oh, yeah. Look at the debt exclusions in 2017, you had 1.7. And then that went down as low as 1.4. That was kind of the, the low bottom amount. And I, I got to tell you, you know, that, that's dangerously low for your capitalization on a $100 million budget, that you only have 1.4 million in the debt exclusions. And, and I know it was by design, because people knew that we had a couple of big projects coming up, so they tried to bring the debt down to its knees. Well, you accomplished that, so that was a great job. And then it went up to 2.5, and then now with all those three projects, the total excluded debt is at 4.3. And, you know, the, the key factor is to keep the property taxes levy, you know, so that we, we've got more major infrastructure that we're figuring out where it fits. It's not programmed to fit into the property tax levy, but obviously with wastewater, there'll be a lot of new fees, charges, things such as that. But again, you know, we will avoid all of these DEP charges for everyone to
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned wastewater, because I think we're interested in looking at how that factors in as well. You know, in looking ahead at the Springtown meeting, you know, how, how will, because that's a question we're getting asked, I'm getting asked, you know, in going into the next town meeting, the cost of wastewater, and how is it going to be reflected and, and how we're going to pay for it? So I know we want to avoid adding that to this, so the question's going to be, where else, where else is it going to pop up?
Right. And so, you know, there'll be, there'll be betterments associated with that, user fees. So there, there will be a lot of extra fees, we're, we're trying to avoid the property tax, but it's a very expensive project. So we'll have to have a whole night on, on wastewater financing. But suffice to say, you know, the property tax piece is, is largely the diff zone. That's where we've been focusing. But, you know, we'll, we'll have to see the overall big picture, because, you know, there's very big numbers on wastewater, but it's a very important project as, as well.
Do you have a rough idea when we might be able to start digging into that and getting a good handle on that, Bob?
Yeah, I, I think that we'll, we'll have to get through this town meeting, and probably in December will be a good time to, to begin having those workshops that, there's a lot of analysis that's being done right now, so I think you'll have the benefit of all of that. So let's maybe even stay on, on the numbers just for one more second. Overall, we're being very conservative for FY '24, not factoring in any cap overrides or, or massive increases that, based on this analysis, our, our total revenues are increasing by approximately 2.5%, maybe just under, which, again, on a, on a $100 million budget is, and those are substantial numbers, a, a lot of it, you know, the, the overall budget will be determined by how things shake out for education, which is our obviously largest expenditure area, and, but, but there's not a lot of big property tax surprises or, or anything like that. Overall revenues, overall budgets are going to stay within 2.5% region. So what we're trying to do is manage our budget within that range without any major increases, and, and I think any other increases, you know, will be more in the, on the capital piece. So with that in mind, I, I, I think that's kind of the key point that I wanted to make, that the draft policy statement is, is geared towards moving forward in a conservative, financially conservative environment that plugs our, our major holes, and most notably is sustainable, with all expenditures being supported by existing recurring revenues, so that we don't put ourselves in a position that we're over-appropriating based on our anticipated revenues. And just to go through and let the public see, there's essentially 12 key points that I've highlighted in your draft policy statement, and I'll just go through those quickly. First and foremost is to factor the Board of Selectmen's goals into the budget, and to, to make sure that that's clear to departments, that we want to provide the resources necessary to accomplish the goals that the board has voted on. We have a goal of allowing an increase within 2.5% for educational increases, and I think anything over and above that, we will have to, you know, potentially have an override or something along those lines. But we are reserving that 2.5% for educational increases. We want to make sure that we fully fund all of the contractual wage increases, colas, everything in the budget within the recurring revenues, so we don't have any unanticipated outside-of-budget costs. We also want to fully fund the utility costs, pension costs, health insurance, and general insurance obligations, all of those overhead items. As you recall, last year, we, we saw some pretty significant inflation in just those areas. So we're hoping that within the revenues that we discussed, fully funding all of these overhead obligations. We also want to see a commitment made to funding the other requirements that we have in, in OPEB chart that we're trying to follow. And so we've incorporated that into the policy. The one thing that could be a little stretch, but we maintain it as sort of a carryover goal, if it's possible. Right now, we have all of our capital spending tied up with free cash and user fees. We'd like to have, in addition to available free cash and user fees, a sum of money underneath the property tax levy, weighing the 2.5%, and we've targeted 1.5 million. It may not be possible. Try to incorporate some of that capital spending underneath the property tax levy. We're fortunate to have free cash available, but it would be more sustainable if we could have a mix. And last year, we were successful in moving 1.2 million in road maintenance from outside sources into the major levy budget, and what we want to try to do is maintain that, keep that 1.2 million under top 2.5 inside the budget where it currently resides. So that's some of our capital spending goals. And additionally, with this budget, we want to keep the revenue estimation conservative to provide for an increase in town reserves. And we want to also retain a portion of our existing free cash for future use, not spend that all down in, in this fiscal year. We want to preserve any reductions from declining debt for future capital borrowing, which has been a longstanding policy that is a very sustainable policy. And we also want to continue to develop and set aside the pre-funding sources for wastewater. And we've been very successful in putting money into pre-funding as possible, and we want to continue that. And any new staff positions are to be funded with secure, recurring, and sustainable funding sources, allowing us to produce a structurally balanced total budget that is sustainable moving forward. And I think that allows the Board of Selectmen the room to make the decisions on the individual budget areas, but moving forward, that we have structurally a solid and sustainable system. And, and those are the values that are incorporated into the proposed policy statement, and in your packet as well. I won't go through the details, but you can see there, there is a detailed budget calendar. And just some of the key dates I want to point out is that we're slated to have the Board of Selectmen approve the budget statement, and that would enable us by the end of this week to issue the budget guidelines to department heads, who will work on their budgets and missions, and submit those to us by the end of this month. And I have a deadline of December 30th to present to the Board of Selectmen and to the Finance Committee a budget proposal based on all of the departments. And so during that period, like on Christmas Eve and everything, I'll be meeting with all of the departments and establishing their budgets. I find the closer you get to the holidays, the softer they get. But, no, not true. We, we will meet with each and every cost center, independently evaluate what their needs are, and hopefully by December 30th, have a budget. And so that'll mean January will be the budget review time. And with that, I would just turn it back to you folks with any questions or?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we adopt the proposed FY '24 budget policy statement as presented by the town administrator.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Cast is five zero. Good evening, ladies.
Good evening. I'm Karen Green. I'm the Director of Community Development. And I'd like to introduce you all. I know you approved the hiring of Brittany when she first started, but I wanted to introduce you in person to Brittany DiRienzo, our new Conservation Administrator. Brittany came on just back in July, and she's done a great job getting to know town, getting to know the Conservation Commission members. We have a couple of members here tonight, Ellie Lawrence and Pat Mulhearn. But she's done a really great job kind of coming up to speed on what is a very, very busy office. So the, the purpose of our visit tonight, the office was previously staffed with the full-time Conservation Administrator and a part-time office administrator. At last year's annual town meeting, folks voted to approve funding for an additional part-time position, which we had then perceived as a more technical person. which we had then perceived as a more technical person, someone that could help the administrator that was out in the field. We took a little bit of time to fill the position because we had turnover in the office. And then more recently, our Office Administrator resigned for a different position. So we put our heads together to look at the office needs and really settled on the need for a more full-time position to support the, the administrator in the office. This person would be a combination, that'd be in the office some of the time, they'll be out of the office some of the time, supporting Brittany out in the field. And we put the job descriptions together. We went to the Personnel Board a while back, just a few weeks back. They've graded the position, and so we're here tonight to ask the Board's permission to go ahead, to move forward with filling this full-time position rather than having the two part timers.
Mr. Chairman, can you just clarify for me, the Conservation Administrator is a part-time position as currently?
My, I'm the Conservation Administrator and my position is full-time.
That's what I thought. So we're looking at taking the part-timer that we recently approved and getting, making sure that that's full-time, right? Isn't that the?
We're, we're looking at combining two part-time positions into one full-time position.
We had a, so we have the Conservation Administrator, who oversees the department, the division. And then which, who is, who is Brittany? And then we had a part-time Office Administrator position, which was kind of more just administrative in the office, nineteen hours a week was the position. The funding that was approved at the last annual town meeting was for another nineteen hour per week position. What we want to do is combine the two part times so that we would have a Conservation Administrator, still have Brittany, but we'd have a new job that we're calling a Conservation Agent.
And that person would be paid how much?
That person would be paid. So the Personnel Board reviewed the position and they graded it as a grade eight. And so that works out to about forty nine thousand dollars a year.
Forty nine thousand.
What are the two part-time positions combined?
Full-time position. I'm, I'm sorry.
What are the two part-time positions combined?
The two part-time positions combined. So the Office Administrator position was a grade seven. And this new position, we had, we had kind of guesstimated that it would be an eight. So if you add together a part-time seven and a part-time eight, we ended up with forty eight thousand sixty dollars. A full-time thirty-seven and a half hour position for a grade eight is forty eight thousand nine fifty-two. So it's a, it's a delta of about eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars on the wage end.
Eight hundred and ninety thousand?
Did I say that? It's, I'm sorry. It's not that much. Eight hundred and ninety-one.
But there'd be a benefits package too on top.
And there would be a benefits package.
What was that amount too?
So it, it, I checked in with Sarah and it really depends on what benefits the new employee would opt in for. But benefits, so the, looking at the menu of options, the lowest benefit choice on an annual cost would be forty, like forty-six hundred dollars a year. The highest benefit package looks like it's seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars a year. So depending on what this employee opts, it would kind of be somewhere in that range.
The case that the permitting activity has obviously picked up in the past few years, there's been a lot of work going on in there. Has that dropped off at all with the, the Fed raising interest rates and people being scared out of?
Not at all, no.
No? So the? And use?
Continues and increases with the number of special projects we have and going on in town right now.
Yeah.
I'll be straightforward. I mean, I, I, I think for me, we, it's almost like we can't get enough staff in there. I mean, I, I know it's a very busy office. I follow the agenda of the Conservation Commission meetings. I follow some of the work that's going on there. I know the office needs more help. I do think what would be helpful though, as this position is adopted and work goes forward on it, is there might be some help in putting together just numerically, just giving people a sense of just how busy things have gone there, whether it's the number of applications that have come in over time. I think you can justify this. I don't, I don't, I, I can, I, I feel confident even without seeing the numbers. But I do think there would be some benefit in showing the history of the increased activity.
And we're, we're prepared with that. The office has done a great job kind of tracking everything. Oh yeah, we have that.
Then if you could provide that to us soon, that would be very, very good.
I think the, the other point, and I think it's a, it's a good dovetail because the, the regulatory function in the office is very, very busy. But what we'd like to do at this point with having a, a professional in place and kind of upping the level of support is to build capacity in the office because we do have so many other projects in town. We'd like to be able to do the regulatory, but we also want to be able to do the more coastal resiliency, the work on the parks that we've been developing, the MVP program. I mean, it's, there's a lot of good, good stuff going on, but our priority is always for that office, the regulatory function. Because people come in and people need their permits, so that's our priority.
You, you don't have to convince me about the need for more capacity in the office. There's, there's a ton of stuff going on in there, quite frankly. I'm just saying it's helpful to have, if you've got the numbers, I'd love to see them. But I, I would agree completely that there's a need to do more. I mean, we've, we've, we've got now a, a resiliency plan of sorts. There's MV, whatever we call it.
Yeah, Misses Vulnerability.
Exactly. And now there's a lot of talk about how do we implement that? And I know at the county level where I do some work, I mean, we're talking about how does the county support some of the local efforts in that regard? Because we know that there's a capacity issue. So the demands on the office, obviously they're growing and they're going to continue to grow. So I'm very supportive of this. If you'd came in here asking for probably another position, I'd probably be very supportive of that as well. But, you know, I know you're being conservative as does the Yarmouth. It's in the Yarmouth DNA. We're always very conservative on these things. So I think that your request is very, very reasonable and I certainly will support it. So thank you.
I don't disagree at all with those comments. I'm just curious why last year you didn't envision a full-time position rather than asking for another part-time position?
I think that we've been restricted by budget constraints that kind of have, have come down. I think that, you know, I'm, I'm definitely hearing that we're more open to growing, growing staff if we can. I think it's great. I mean, I turned around to Brittany and I said, well, maybe we can get extra people. But maybe that'll be later on in the budget process around Christmas time.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Dorcas.
I like the idea of combining the two positions into one. I think part-time positions get a little vague on what they're, what's being covered. And I think having some, one person devoted to, to doing the job is going to be a lot better. I'm surprised at the delta on the benefits. So it could go from four thousand dollars to seventeen thousand eight hundred?
That's my understanding. And I didn't, so what I didn't do, because I'm not a benefits kind of expert, is take down the information on what those are, but I just took the level of funding that was required to cover those benefits and got those from Sarah, so.
Very interesting. Well, I too support the idea of strengthening your division. It's one that we've got a lot of projects out there that we're looking into. I think we need to have a little better capacity in the office to handle it. Brittany, it's nice to see you. Congratulations. Glad to have you on board. Thanks. That's all.
Thank you, Dorcas. Peter.
Brittany, welcome. Very supportive and, and if there's additional capacity, you know, helping out with, you know, like the Friends of Bass River, you know, their projects and stuff. I think those are all important as well as the regulatory. So I, I, I support this and, and it's easy if you've got a full-time person around because you can count on them at four o'clock. When you need somebody, they're still there. And he does have the meeting set for around eleven o'clock on Christmas Eve. It's perfect.
Okay. We'll bring cookies.
No, no other comments.
I'm supportive of the position as well. I mean, Conservation is a very busy department and everywhere you go to do something around here, you're running the wetlands or marsh areas or rivers or streams or ponds or whatever. And the regulatory process is getting more and more cumbersome, more and more involved, more and more time consuming.
And if I can just add, Mr. Chairman, I think one of the, one of the challenges I noticed that Kelly Grant had to wrestle with is the large number of homeowners, new homeowners, that knew virtually nothing or very little about the Wetlands Protection Act. And so we had a lot of time seeing her out in the field, literally having to deal with compliance issues and problems. And in some cases, some of those are very difficult to resolve. So I think that's, that's been a big, that's been a, a big factor, you know, in, in this office. So I think the demands have grown significantly, but that's, that's, that's.
Building and permitting, again, in an area like this, wherever you turn is some kind of water or tributary or estuary or it's the nature of the beast. It's where we live. It's our environment. It's the environment we live in. So it gets more and more challenging, not less as we go on.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we approve the request for this new position, Conservation Agent.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? So that passes unanimously. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, Brittany.
Going on to Board of Committee actions, Dorcas. You look, looks like you've got some appointments on Board of Health, Age Friendly Community.
Yes. There are two positions in the Board of Health that are coming up for reappointment. They are three-year terms to run through October twenty twenty-five. And the recommendation is to reappoint Mr. Boski and Mr. Holloway as regular members of the Town of Yarmouth Board of Health. These appointments are for the three-year term, which will run through October twenty twenty-five.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero.
And on the Age Friendly Community Team, we have one representative position for a one-year term to run through October twenty twenty-three. And the recommendation is to reappoint Mr. Kraus as the Age Friendly Community Team Representative to the Disability Commission. This appointment is for the one-year term, which will run through October twenty twenty-three.
So moved. Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes five zero. I guess that's it for appointments, minutes of February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. And then we have a minutes of September thirteenth of twenty twenty-two. So let's deal with the first ones first, the September twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. We have a motion on that.
So moved. Approve the minutes of February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one.
We have a motion and a second. Okay. So at that meeting, present, just to refresh, Tracy Post was here at that time. So it was Dan Horgan, myself, Mark. Looks like.
Eric Tolly was absent.
Looks like there, there were three sitting members.
Yeah.
So does somebody want to make a motion on that?
We did already.
Oh, you did? Okay. So who made the motion? Mark?
Yep.
And who's second? Okay. Mark and Dan. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed?
I am staying.
Okay, we have four in favor, one abstention. And now we go to the second set of meetings, which is September thirteenth of twenty twenty-two.
Can I ask?
We actually have. Yeah, we have an executive session portion of here, here too. Is this an approved and, and hold or is this a release on the executive session minutes? Does anybody know?
Doesn't have anything really.
Let me just look at this a second.
Mr. Chairman, I just move, I would propose that we we approve the executive session minutes of September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two and hold them for the time being.
I agree till after town meeting at least. Okay, so you have that motion. I'll second that motion on the September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two executive session minutes. And present were Dan Horgan, Mark Forrest, Dorcas, Peter Smith. So we all were here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? But that's an approved and hold on, five zero vote on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two executive session meetings. And now I would like to have a motion on this September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two public meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of September thirteenth, twenty.
A second on that, Dan. All right. All those in favor? All right. Anyone opposed? So that's a five zero on the minutes of the public session.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification. On, on the hold, is there a time limit on the hold or?
There's not a statutory time limit. When we feel that there not really any need to preserve confidentiality, we release them and you know, just looking at these, there's, there's other action we're going to be pursuing.
No, no, I, I have no problem with the hold. I, I just, I'm just trying to figure mechanically, does this get looked at again in six months or eight months? So it just doesn't stay held forever?
It will come back after we've dispensed with that business that it's associated with. That's typically.
There's no, as far as I know, there's no definitive time period in which we, we have to act on that. Unless somebody from the public pushes it and says, hey, you know, we want to, we want to get those released. We look at them?
We do review them regularly, at least twice a year, and any ones that we can release.
Again, my, my, just a mechanical question, that's all. Brent, thank you.
Okay, so that brings us to the upcoming agenda review, I guess. And November ninth, we're going to have a special town meeting run-through like I think Peter suggested that we have. Like we did before, so many annual meetings. And so that's all set. That's next.
It's, it's a Wednesday.
That's a Wednesday. Okay. So we're going to be all ready for that, Bob?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And then we got a special town meeting and we're going to have a meeting of the board.
Could we on the ninth make sure, Mr. Chairman, that we make our assignments that night in terms of who's going to cover what article?
So, yeah, let's do assignments on that too, assignments of articles.
Just make a note of that, Bob, that we can't leave that meeting without making assignments on the articles.
Yeah, because that'll be the last opportunity to do that.
Right.
And we can do that in short order. I don't think that'll take much time at all.
And then what we've typically done at the Select Board meeting, or at least what I, what I, what I, what I think we've done recently, Mr. Chairman, is we've actually walked through the motions on each of the articles at the meeting prior to the town meeting. We did that last couple of times, and I think it was a big help. It helped us when, when town meeting began and we were on the floor. So we did a dry run. We went through each one of them with our briefing books. And, and the Town Administrator walked through our briefing books with us, with the motions.
That'll be the fifteenth.
So we'll do that, yeah, for that meeting on the fifteenth at five P M.
Mr. Scott did a wonderful job at the last town meeting to get everything organized.
It was well done.
We did. He did do a good job on that, so. Then on the twenty-ninth, we have a comprehensive. Then on the 29th, we have a comprehensive plan update, Riverwalk Park Drive Insight Update, Vehicle Policy Update.
May I ask, Mr. Chairman, is the planning board gonna be ready for that comprehensive plan update? To discuss that? Are they gonna be with us for that meeting?
Yeah, they had picked that date. We tried to get it done earlier, if you recall, in October, and they said, can, you know, busy with the zoning right now, can we wait and do it on November 29th? So we said, sure.
Okay, so they're comfortable with it.
I'm, it just, on the.
And then obviously, we're gonna run into some holiday things as we go forward.
And, Mr. Chairman, on, on the 29th, I'm coming back from a holiday thing, coming back from Tennessee. So if I get back at a reasonable time, I will be here. But if there's a flight delay, I, I can't control that.
Okay. So I just.
You can't?
No, I cannot.
Jesus, we thought you got that under control.
Don't get in trouble. I'm reading about all of the unruly passengers. We don't want any.
I have to get back for a walk for me. No, that wouldn't go over well.
Just, you go up and you knock on the door in the front of the plane.
Does anybody have anything else in term, oh, Mark had mentioned earlier, we wanted to get, and you said, I think, sometime in December, Bob, update on where we gonna, where we stand with wastewater funding. Where can we, where can we stick that and maybe on the sixth of the tour, what, what day would accommodate, I'd rather I'd rather give whatever time is necessary and get a meaningful, comprehensive discussion rather than rush it and kind of have to get the second piece later. So what do you think works in terms of what I just said, Bob, in terms of a date for that? To get the best. You know, something fairly concrete.
Well, we could shoot for the sixth, but I need to sit with, where, you know, we've got, we've got quite a team and we still. Bill, when do you think we'll get some of the diff? Come on, it'd be great to get some of the come on data.
Yeah, we have a survey out to about 100 property owners in the quarter, and we're getting data in on their projects. So probably I'm gonna give them another two weeks to get the data back. So we sent out a survey. The chamber has a list of about 100 property owners that are part of that futures group that we keep in touch with. And the survey asked a question, do you have a project? In what quarters are you gonna make what investments to that project? So I'm hoping to wrap that up in two weeks to get the raw data. And then from there, you merge it with the development plan to determine what your percentages are. So I won't have the percentages. I'll have some idea what the new growth might look like.
Let's say the 20th, and we can go over diff, we can go over better.
Yeah, it sounds to me like based on what, because, and again, you got the Thanksgiving holiday, which people travel and do stuff, and I'd rather see you get the time you need. Let's figure the 20th, at least for now, all right? So I would say update on wastewater financing.
Do you have any update on terms of DOT? Just in terms of whether or not.
Yeah.
Giving any movement in terms of the utility notion?
DOT update.
We had talked about that. It's trying to get like a split off with the utility. Think we'll be ready at some point in time to get kind of a, a report on that, or are, are we just?
I think, I think we have to keep, keep talking about it and staying, staying with it. Yeah. And the other thing that we should probably be thinking about for December, I'll put this out for discussion. Mr. Chairman, is we have a warrant article for the Matta Key Middle School Small School Reuse Plan Committee. We may want to have at least some discussion of next steps. And maybe at least initiate the RFP process before January 1st. So would you be ready? If, if, if we, I'm assuming you're gonna want to move on that.
The scope is ready.
I don't really want to do Matta Keys until we figure out the wastewater. Honestly, you guys are pushing a little too hard on it. Let's focus on getting something more concrete on wastewater, and then we'll focus on Matta Keys. If I, if I send Bill in a different direction, I think we are, it's like sort of all hands on deck on, on figuring out what the best strategies for wastewater is right now. It's, it's a very critical timeframe. So.
Well, I appreciate your candor on that. I really do. And as I said before, I, and some of these really more important projects, I'd rather give sufficient time and get something accomplished rather than have a meeting only to identify a whole host of other areas that have to be explored, you know? I like continuity when I can get it. So I think, I think your point's well taken. All right, anybody have anything else? I think those are some really important issues that have been identified that we want to get moving on. Let's look at the stuff that we have and a placeholder on the next page. Library update on proposed new building. Possibility is of historic museum that's not ready to go forward. State Rep Senator update. At the meeting yesterday, we, Julian Seer approached me and Bob and was talking and said that after the election, he, he would very much like to come in and address the board. And I think, and then we got, we're gonna have a new state rep. In District One, one way or the other. I think that would be good to get our legislative delegation in and, and talk about some of the items that are important to us that we would hope they would press for some action on in the State House.
Right, we're talking about three representatives.
And we got the other one, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I understand that that was, I was just mentioning one, and then we got, was it District Two? That, that Kip Diggs is in, is that two? So whoever, if he's reelected, or if he's not, whoever is elected in two, we'd always, we'd want them in two, those three people. I don't know if any of the county people would, in the county races would.
I think for a separate meeting, I'm glad you brought this up. I think there's some value in bringing in the county, our county officials, particularly you've got Suzanne McAuliffe, when she was on the assembly, she would come in like once.
Time.
She'd be here once a month to check in with us and, or maybe let's say every couple of months, every two months. So.
A lot of reports, yeah.
She gave a lot of reports on what the county was up to. She was, we put her, she came, would come in on comments, but she was open to actually being put on the agenda. We never did that. But I would recommend we have an appointee to the Cape Cod Commission that we haven't really heard from. We have Bob Lauten is our appointee to the RTA. I mean, you may, there may be some value in just having our county, rounding up our county representatives. They represent us. There may be some value just bringing them in to give us, you know, give each one of them five minutes, just give us a quick update on what they're working on or what we, what we might and what might be coming up that we might need to spend more time on. So you've got an RTA rep. I think Jeff Colby represents Yarmouth on the Joint Transportation Committee. You've got a Cape Cod Commission rep, an Assembly rep. Obviously, you've got county commissioners, but I don't think, I think you might want to do that separately, the county commissioner piece of it, and I would focus on those, those individuals.
Okay, then I see the next update on water quality conditions. You know, we, we might want to get an update too on where we stand with this drought, if we're in a recovery, and if so, you know, where are we on that?
So asking.
I know we've got a lot of rain and certainly, conditions must have improved to some degree, but I, I'd like to know to what degree and where we really stand on that.
That would be interesting also with after the town meeting, so that we can see.
Definitely be after the town meeting and after the.
About what the happened with, with that bylaw that we put before the people.
Correct.
We get an update on that as well. So it'd be good, it all ties in together.
Yeah, I.
So that would be a good thing to do.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I've been approached by a number of folks going, are we still in a drought emergency or not? And is it on the website? I couldn't find it on the website.
Yeah.
So.
I'm sure there's some improvement, as I said, but you know, it doesn't necessarily, it, it's been such a long period of time without any precipitation, it doesn't necessarily take you out of the danger zone, so to speak.
We're still in a drought condition.
Yeah.
Right, and I, or maybe it's level one, where we've moved up the ladder, but we're not out of the woods yet.
Let's find out where we are on that. It shouldn't be too much work for that to happen. Then Matta Keys, we talked about, Yarmouth Housing Update.
That might not be a bad idea, you know.
Route 28 Design. Change of Name, Mass DOT Update on Route 28, and Special Municipal Employee Designation. Yeah, where do we stand with that Special Municipal Employee Designation? That seems to have gotten, gotten kind of lost along the way.
Well, you. That gets sidetracked. That's just, I guess, on, on hold, and the idea was to, we're examining other committees. We started with the CEDC and a couple of others, and we, we still don't have a comprehensive list.
Already. Okay.
We didn't want to lose.
So we, well, we're gonna have some time to spend getting ready for town meeting too. You guys will with coordinating staff and presentations and stuff. So I don't want to get too aggressive with this agenda till after town meeting. So anybody have any other comments or anything? All right, we'll see how it develops from here. I'm looking forward to hopefully getting a good run through on the night. I think if I thought of it, I would have made an announcement tonight on. Can we get something up on the, on the website announcing that on Wednesday? November 9th, we're gonna have a special town meeting. I would call it a preview. Because run through people may not know what that means, maybe a preview.
Yeah, sneak peek.
Well, what would be a good way, what would be a good way to describe it so that people know?
You covered it, preview.
Preview?
Yeah.
Okay.
There you go.
Right. Yeah, we had all, we had all the excitement of the people with the police promotions and things. It was kind of it got kind of lost in terms of the ability to announce that, which I would have. Because we don't have another public meeting until then. Right, so I guess we'll move on from there. Once I find my agenda, which I buried.
Individual items is the next item on the agenda.
Okay, thanks, Dorcas. Let's see, individual items is, is on. So Peter, do you have anything, individual items?
You stole my thunder, thunder when you talked about the drought. That was gonna be my individual item.
Very good. Okay.
Not at this time.
Yeah. Mark?
I'm all set, thanks.
I just, again, would like to acknowledge that when I first heard about this change of command ceremony, I wasn't convinced that it was gonna be as wonderful as it turned out to be. It was a great idea, Mark, and it was well attended by some very prominent people. The room was full, packed. And I think the participants, and that's what it was about ultimately, Chief Frederickson and incoming Chief Kevin Lennon. I think it was very meaningful to both of them. And as well as their families and supporters and others. I think it was a great idea, and I think it was a tradition that should be kept going forward. I, I think it was that good that, that we should stay with it. I also want to acknowledge that the remarks that I made at that meeting, I wanna, I, I took the collective input of, of the board, of, of of our town administrator and my own ideas and tried to meld them into a theme that fit what we were trying to do. So I want to thank all of you for your input. It was a, you know, even though I delivered the message, it was a conglomeration of all of your ideas that you've expressed and through the hiring process.
Yeah, I thought the remarks were right on. It was a mix of humor, seriousness, solemnness, and I thought, I thought you represented the board extremely well, Mr. Chairman, and I agree with you. I think I knew there was some ambivalence about the doing this and what it would entail.
So new, yeah.
Yeah, but I, I just had this sort of gut feeling that we needed to do this, just because of who we are.
Terrific.
What our department's all about and the individuals involved. And it all, it, it, it all, it all worked out. And there was a, there was, there was a tremendous amount of emotion there. You could feel that meeting. I mean, it was, it was quite quite noticeable how everyone was sort of affected and connected by it. I mean, for me, having been raised a Catholic, you know, ceremony and ritual is always a part of the tradition, and I do think periodically what it, what that did was it connected the selectman, the administrator, the department, the individuals involved. This was our time together to memorialize this passage and this transition with obviously invited guests from the community that are sort of part of the extended family. So I think in that sense, it had, I could tell from a number of people who spoke to me afterwards that it had a lot of meaning for people. And I think that there are going to be occasions in the future where we may need to think through an appropriate ceremony or point where we can mark you know, the, the, a, a time of transition in a department and sort of try to bring together the same kind of constituency. So I thought everything worked out well together. I, you know, I, and I'm just glad it all worked out the way it did. So thanks for the, thanks for the comments. I'm glad it worked out. I thought you did a great job. Bob was terrific. And obviously, the other individuals that were there did a wonderful job. It was a very special moment. I think, I think that's something that I'm gonna remember for a long, long time.
It was terrific. And I want to thank Bob too. He, he was a big help and he, you know, this thing was changing with dates and format, and I would get, you know, a either an email or a text message, and he would have it all outlined on there, and here's what, you know, I want to bring you up to date. Here's how it's gonna go now, so. It was nice. So that when I walked in there, and there were a lot of changes being made in the process, but I was always kept up to date as to what they are. So there was no big deal. And then when I got there ready to walk in the room, he says, no, no, you go, we go upstairs. So that was another change, somebody else. So he, he handled all of that stuff and made it look like it was all pre-planned from step one all the way through the end, which it wasn't. There was a lot of flux in the process. So he, and I thought he, I thought he looked pretty good up there and very experienced, very comfortable. Did a nice job.
It went well.
Okay.
And I'm glad, let me just say, while you're on this, I think the tonight's meeting and the swearing in of the new personnel with the police department sort of
That energy.
Yeah, that energy was clearly here in the room for tonight.
See a lot of pride.
Particularly the kids.
Oh, it was great with the kids.
The children in the meeting, and I couldn't help but catch their energy. It was very evident as well. So tonight was a good meeting, so I'm glad that came together the way it did. So thank, thanks to all for that.
All right, so now, let's see, we go to the consent.
Chairman, I get, I got one comment about.
Sure, sure.
Just, just very quickly. It was solemn, but you also brought in humor, which made it much lighter. It just wasn't, just so strict and militaristic, if you will. I mean, it was, your comments were wonderful, frankly. As, as we heard, Bob, and some other folks doing, you could, you could hear some of the, some of the, you know, the laughter and the giggling and, and when you made, made some of your comments and stuff, which, which is good, because it really lightened, lightened the mood and I, and it made everybody feel, feel good. And when, when Frank came out with the badge on the silver tray, that.
And when, when Frank came out with the badge on the silver tray, that was phenomenal.
It was. Yeah, we tried to, you know, we tried to be respectful of the occasion and, you know, accomplish the things that Mark mentioned, but we also didn't want a lot of sadness or anything, because it was supposed to be a very positive thing, you know, for both of them, and I think it was.
Celebration for the town, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Mark saw that, like, from, from the first, from the first.
I think Frank was very upbeat and positive, even though I'm sure inside, you know, it's a big change. Like he was saying upstairs, when we were talking, 45 years are coming to the same place, and the next day, what do you do? But, but he was very positive about it, and he was kind of trying to step back and give Kevin the, the attention, and it all worked.
It did. Yeah, I know some folks were reluctant, but it, I'm glad everyone stuck to their guns to, to make this thing come together.
And, and they all wound up embracing it. That was the thing, when, when push came to shove, everyone, everyone climbed right in, so.
But that was a nice, that was a nice group there.
Yeah, when I was speaking with Representative Xyros there, he was actually, said he had never been to anything like that before, and he turned to me and said, don't be surprised if this starts something with other departments, because he said it was, he was very touched by it, and he was very impressed by the whole thing, what we did. And, you know, who knows? It could be the.
We'd be looking for our script.
Well, you'll be able to, another consulting.
Get it on the road.
Yeah.
There you go.
Exactly.
No, it was good, it worked out well. So now we have, let's see, all right, consent agenda.
One item on here. Oliver's and Plank's Tavern is looking for a one-day extension of their current entertainment license, indoor only.
Let me giggle.
Wednesday, November 23, from 9:00 to 12:00, and, and their normal hours are.
I'm going to take that back, is that?
Yeah, take it, that's fine, I found mine, thank you, Dorcas.
Bob, has there been any complaints under the new owners?
Not, not since our, our last.
Not since our last session.
Not since then.
You know, once in a while, this, these kinds of things will come up, and I'll get an email from Bob and Dakota saying, you know, for example, take the Chamber of Commerce, they get rained out, can, can they do it the next day? And I'll go, sure, go ahead. So normally, I would approve something like this, but being that the history, I said, I'd really, I'd really rather get my comrades on the board involved in this one, and do it, do it collectively.
Well, it is an unusual day.
I don't see anybody making a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I mean, normally, like I said, I, I would be very comfortable with it if it was an establishment that didn't have any issues. I'm not saying that there should be negative action, I'm just saying that I, I would feel the board members might say, why did you do this without consulting us, given the circumstances? And, and so I.
I, I'd, I'd make a motion to approve, and again, because Bob said there's been no, no complaints and no screaming and yelling from the, from the neighbors. If there had been screaming and yelling, I would not.
Yeah, this one day, you know, when it's, what are the hours again, three hours?
Nine to 12.
Yeah, so.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? All right, that passes by a unanimous vote, and that takes care of the consent agenda. We have town administrator updates.
Okay, I'll try to go quickly. I, I did want to let you know that Mark Force and I attended the airport's environmental assessment review meeting, which was held last week, and we're preparing, I'm working with our consultant to make some comments. You know, the one thing, I, I just want to make sure everyone's clear on the environmental review process is not going to be over till 2024. And in that process, there, there's a number, they're going full boat, which is good, it's very good. There is the federal permit, that's the environmental assessment. NEPA, the National Environmental Protection Agency. There's also an ENF, environmental notification form, that has to go into the Massachusetts Environmental Protection Agency. And this, this is also a development of regional impact, DRI, under the Cape Cod Commission. So there's three critical reviews. We have time to comment in, in each of them, and it's going to be a two-year process, so it's not the type of thing that, you know, is going to be over in a, in a week. And, and I just want to say the one thing is that, what I'm pushing for, and I'm sort of working with the consultant on this, is, is that some of the items that we had for requests that were the most valuable ones, which is doing the written flight plan for every pilot that, you know, sure, they can override it, but making that a part of their operations, things of this, we had worked with the airport, and, and they had agreed that those were good ideas when they were doing the master plan. And, and kind of one of the things that we're looking for is for them to incorporate some of these items into their environmental statements, which they're in the data collection phase only right now, and we feel it would be better is if we could sort of get under the tent and get our issues on the table with their support, rather than have them do their report, leave us out, and then we're submitting comments, right? Which we're prepared to do, just, so there's a lot more information on that, we're staying right on top of it. I just wanted to make you guys aware that the environmental assessment process sort of started, they had their kickoff meeting, they, they're not ready for a few months to submit their statements, and then we'll get comments or questions.
Question on this. Are we going to comment on the ENF? The ENF was submitted, wasn't it?
No.
It has not been submitted.
Oh, no.
So is the goal to make sure that before an ENF is submitted, some of the suggestions can be incorporated in their thinking and their planning, that they can memorialize some way?
Correct. They're, they're not going to, and when they submit the ENF, you, you got to understand, that, that is not the assessment. That's just their initial notify, it's called ENF, it's environmental notification form. There's a process that once that.
No, I'm very familiar with the process. What I'm, what I'm interested in knowing is making, I mean, that's not a bad place to be introducing some of the things that we want them to consider, because it's the, the conclusion of the ENF process is a certificate from the Secretary of Environmental Affairs outlining what they want the applicant to do in the draft DIR. So I think it's, I do think it's a legitimate topic for conversation. I like your idea of getting in under the tent and getting them to incorporate stuff, but I think one way to maybe help get that done is if they know there's like, there's potential to be a letter submitted during the ENF process and the comment process. I think we should have a board discussion on whether or not we submit something on the ENF. I don't, I would not want that opportunity to go by without our board having a conversation. There are residents in Yarmouth, they're going to want to make sure that we're commenting on that, or want, will want to know why we didn't comment when comments were being solicited. And, you know, I'm open to taking a stab at making sure that the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs puts the burden on the applicants to find ways to reduce noise as much as possible, and if the secretary doesn't want to do that, well, you know, at least, at least we've made the shot. But I don't discount your idea of trying to get, would you say, get in, get in early, get them to adopt stuff, be the nice guy, and try to be positive, take that approach. But having said that, let's assume they do that, then we still should think about having something to say for that period. I, I, I would advise the board that it's a mistake to let that period go by without at least having a discussion on the comments on it. I hear what Bob is saying, and I, I think his approach makes sense, but we should at least have the opportunity to have a discussion on it before that window of opportunity passes us by.
When do you expect that filing, Bob?
They have on their schedule that they want to do their initial filing November 30th, and then they file it in the monitor on December 7th, and there's a 20-day comment period from, on the ENF front.
From December 7th, going forward?
So that meeting in December will be critical to do that. Maybe that's a good item for December 6th.
These comments are for the public generally, right? The comment?
Well, the comments, the public comments are for the public generally, but the NEPA process is the beginning of the comprehensive environmental review. The first step is in filing an environmental notification form, but based on that, once that's submitted, the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs will issue a certificate on the ENF, saying that it adequately addresses the concerns. It's sort of an initial environmental assessment, but on a project like this, the secretary's going to want them to do stuff. So the secretary will spell out in your analysis, these are the things I want to make sure you cover, these are the things that I want you to look at. The thing that I personally would like to see them do is I'd love to see the airport put together an aggressive noise reduction program based on the recommendations that Bob and our consultant have been talking to them about, and to try to make it as robust as possible. And it would be nice if they do it and they showcase it, and we have some buy-in early on, but if that's still vague and it's still uncertain, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't be out there commenting on it. And this gives them an opportunity to say, listen, you know, we know there's going to be noise, there's going to be some anticipated flight operations, but this is our program, and by the way, we've incorporated all these suggestions and ideas from the town of Yarmouth and their consultant, something like that. Yeah. I, I know the secretary has done, dealt with noise at other airports. I give you Logan Airport and East Boston. They restricted when flights could come in and out, and, and some of the flight plans that, that were there. So this is not uncommon for them to deal with, and noise, noise is a pollution. Yeah. Yeah, no, I, I, I'm glad I attended, I'm glad Bob was there to show the flag. Bob actually spoke at the forum. We had a number of Yarmouth residents that were there at this forum, so, and there was some brief discussion with them following the forum. Obviously, they're going to be submitting comments, but again, I don't.
Was this forum live, or was it in line, or?
This forum was at the airport terminal, and it was in one of these public areas, and the forum was a presentation by the airport manager and staff and Epsilon Associates. They're the consulting firm. They, they do EIRs for just about everybody.
Did we get any people come down from the Hyannis Park area?
Yep, yep, they were there, they were well represented, and they spoke, they were not shy, they were not bashful.
No, and they saw that we were there, too, and, and they, they were very happy that the two town officials were there, and, and we represented the interests of the town, and, and we spoke publicly to them, and so I, I, I think that, you know, it was a good kickoff to their, and, and it's about, you know, noise. What do we want the secretary to do? We want the secretary to put in that they're going to look at noise, so that part's easy. But, but like I say, you, you know, if they put in their environmental impact report, all these great ideas that they're going to use to address noise, which are the ideas we helped them with, that's not bad for us.
No, and then, but it also gives us an opportunity to write a letter of support. You know, there's not, I, I honestly think it's important that we, to the extent that there are things that they're doing, that they're doing at our request that mitigate noise, we should let them know that, hey, these things that you're doing make sense, they're great, and we found the airport cooperative. If there's things that we think that they should do, they haven't gone far enough on, let's lay them out there, let's push them on it. But if someone were to ask me, what's the thing that I want to see in this document? The document, I, what I want to see in it is, given the improvements that they're proposing, what additional measures can they do to reduce noise for flights over Yarmouth, particularly the Hyannis Park area? And the recommendations that Bob and the consultant came up with were good, I think. I like the idea that there can be a prescribed path, and if pilots are outside of it and fly outside of it, you know, and as a complaint comes in, they can be notified, and maybe, you know, maybe the FAA, you know, can't sanction them, but there may be something that the airport can do, just keeping tabs on how many pilots, how many airlines, you know, are on the naughty list, you know, so that at time when it comes time to renew a lease or a license or something else, something can be done, or at least, you know, they could exert whatever leverage they have. So I think there are ways, I, I clearly get the impression that, from our consultant, that there are ways to help facilitate and encourage compliance. You know, what we want to do is reduce the amount of planes that fly outside of the approved pathways that are helpful in terms of reducing noise.
Bob, when will we be hearing from our consultant as to some major input into this environmental process?
Oh, no, we, we have to pay him, pay him some more money and ask him to, to make his comments, and, and that's was, you know, his suggestion, he wants to meet with the airport people, and, and we've been trying to get them to incorporate, so he's not out there writing a treaty, see, his contract's over, but we're, we're tasking him to participate in this environmental review, so we're not waiting for anything from him right now.
Yeah, then he mentioned earlier that that would be the time to try to get some significant concessions, if you will, or accommodations for the, for the town, the environmental review.
Yes.
As I remember, and I was speaking, just, just remembering that, he said, really, you couldn't do a heck of a lot prior to that process, environmental process.
So what we're trying to do is get this Epsilon company to meet with Ron and, and get the comments in while they're doing this work, so we're working on that now. You know, they, they haven't had a meeting yet, but I, I hope they'll have a, they'll agree to a meeting. So we asked the, the airport to do, and we've met, we've gone, I've gone up there with Ron and, and met with the manager of the airport, we met with the director of the tower, and then, you know, because they keep giving you this thing, oh, the tower can't do this, the tower can't do that. Well, it turned out they can, and they were, they thought it was a great idea, and then so everyone said it was a great idea, but, you know, how do you get that, like, incorporated into their, you know, because they always fall back on that, oh, gee, you know, we really can't tell people what to do, kind of thing, but.
Yeah, and they'll also tell you that, you know, the pilots got the ultimate decision and.
Yeah, but, but you can, you can impact that 99.9% of the time, unless there's some kind of a problem. It's not, it's not like the pilots run around just flying wherever they want. You're going to tell them where to fly, and then, and then, yeah, in an emergency, you can't overrule a pilot's decision, but, but the pilot doesn't just fly wherever he wants every airport, and, and that's where they move, and this is what we learned. We see, that's why this is so good, having this consultant. We, we learned that, that, that that's a misnomer, you can't just sit there and say the pilot has the ultimate authority. Of course they do, but every single airport in the country gives them specific guidelines, and they only break them when they feel they have to, and, and, you know, so that, that was an epiphany to, to learn that.
Okay, anything else?
Okay, you know, I'm really upset about this. We, we had a very quick turnaround. We, the Mass Department of Agriculture Resources on November 3, at 11 o'clock, is having a public hearing on the vegetation management plan and the operating plan for the next year for the rights of way, and, you know, all of the integrated pest management that's done by EverSource, and I already have, we've been working feverishly, comments from health, comments from conservation, so we've got some detailed comments that are very similar to the comments that we've had in the past, and I want to make sure that we get on the record with these comments about the concerns we have for the vegetation management plan for EverSource, so that's working.
So can you submit those on behalf of the board of select? So can you submit those on behalf of the board of selectmen?
Yes, absolutely. We have to get them in by November 7.
I don't, I think, I think the last time this came up, it was, you did the same thing, a letter on behalf of the board, and it basically lent support to all the comments that were submitted by some of the other departments and committees. I think the Conservation Commission had something to say, or to help set something to say. I think we're pretty familiar with their comments, so I think if you could weigh in on our behalf in support of their concerns, that would be helpful.
Absolutely. So we're working on that, and I do have some really good detail from, you know, Carl in the Health Department, and Brittany did a great job reviewing that plan and making some comments for us. Two other quick items, I wanted to let you know, I I recognized the young lady, our new behavioral health clinician, was the highly talented one that they really had their their eyes on, that was working part time in the program and, you know, was ready to get hired by by someone else. And so that's a big success. I wanted to let you know that I've nominated your approval of the creation of that position for a Kenneth E. Picard Municipal Innovation Award with the Massachusetts Municipal Association. And I I don't know if we're, you know, absolutely going to win it. A lot of the cities have this type of position, but not a lot of rural communities and communities that are situated like us. And and I just want to say, I personally feel within the context of the broader national dialogue that's going on in terms of police training, in terms of how police deal with individuals, with, you know, mental incapacities and problems like that. This program for an area like this and a community situated like ours, I think is a massive innovation and I I give the department all the credit in the world for getting the grants and then having the temerity to bring it into me and come to the board to get it approved permanently. And so I I didn't really lightly nominate them and and so if we win an award for that, whether we do or not, I thought it was, I I involved the command staff over there, you know, and and again, we've used this whole thing as really building some strong bridges. And I I wanted to demonstrate, you know, what Town Hall thought about this program and and their initiative. And I and I think by nominating them for this innovation award, it speaks volumes as to our attitude for excellence, our attitude toward innovation, our attitude towards moving the, you know, the department and the town forward. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. We'll see if anything.
Great.
Comes of it, but but even if we don't win the award, we won the award making the nomination because I had a team and we did that. And the last thing I need to talk to you about is I promised I would work to set up a tour for you of the new intermediate school before we get to the public tour.
Right.
And I have some potential dates and I'm I'm working with, obviously, the chairman of my committee, Joe Tierney. He's on the regional school committee and the chairman of the building committee. And so we have a whole team that puts on these tours. And the the dates that we're working on possibly is November 10 or 11 or else 15 or 16. And sometime around 4:00 PM or so.
On the 11th, do we have veterans services that are going to be held here at Town Hall?
No, at Pockets Landing.
Pockets Landing.
At 11 o'clock.
Pockets Landing at 11 o'clock.
I talked to David Aiken, who I think is one of the organizers or the organizer at the police station, and he said things were going pretty good and that we definitely gonna have a ceremony this year.
It's gonna be a nice ceremony. I I thought that you already had your invitations. I'll make sure you get another one.
We did, we did, well, I got, I got it because I put it in my phone, so I know, I know we got.
I sent one, I I think like three people sent you guys invitations, but. Check your email.
Could I suggest in the four o'clock on the 11th because.
Yeah, that would work well for me.
Yeah, that that doesn't compete with work.
The 11th, we're gonna be done that trial by then, Dan? I don't know, the 11th?
That would be good because it's a holiday.
Well, I'm gonna, I just, I'm in a jury trial.
Tierney knows that, right?
I won't be able to join you on that day and that, not at that time, but.
It's a holiday and then I can have court, that's.
I'll suggest to Joe 11, see what he can come up with. See, he said that was one of the dates he was looking at.
Is that a, yeah, it is only a holiday, right?
Four o'clock?
Yeah, 11th.
That's fine.
Yeah, on the 11th.
Okay. Beautiful. That's all I have for today.
Can I just quickly ask, where are we on the fire chief?
Yeah, I have a meeting with the the consultant to review their their candidates. They, as the board requested, you know, went went back out and received some very high quality candidates. And they're reviewing them right now to try to narrow it down to a, you know, smaller pool of about six people to take the second round of the assessment center. And I set up a meeting today with the consultant to be briefed on his recommended finalists. And that is going to occur on, not tomorrow, but Thursday, Thursday morning. So we have the assessment center scheduled tentatively for November 17. And we have two internal candidates from our round plus, you know, four other candidates. And I I'm told, I I haven't received all of the resumes, which I will on Thursday, but I'm I'm told that they are extremely high qualified candidates.
When you say, I'm a little confused, you said in in four other candidates, but then I also thought you had said they're going to try to narrow down the other ones that responded to six.
We're gonna try to narrow down the whole assessment center to six. So I'm gonna get their recommendations, I.
So the assessment center is gonna do the two internal candidates plus four others? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and at at least, at least one. And it was my anticipation when we started that we were going to take the two, move them along, and then fill out with the external candidates, the rest. So so where where last I left it with them, we were gonna do four new and then the two. But I haven't got his final recommendations and.
So how many responses roughly did you get? You said you're gonna narrow it down to six. What kind of a response did we get?
Twenty five.
That's a big, that's a big response.
Yeah.
Only reason I'm asking, somebody asked me that question, they said, what kind of a response did you get with, you know, the outside input? And I said, yeah, that's a good question. I really don't know. I have to, I'll have to look into that. Okay. All right, I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.